Good evening, citizens. Good evening, everyone. Here at the table, we want to acknowledge our city council and also want to acknowledge our city staff, all of those who are participating with us today. We're looking forward to having a good joint meeting with our Economic Development Authority. I'm going to take a moment to acknowledge them and welcome them to this work session. Before we get on to the agenda and move forward, I will ask Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant?
Present.
Dr. Dotson?
Here.
Mr. Hugel?
Present.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Tillich?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here. And with that, I will move on to the agenda. But before we turn the meeting over to the Economic Development Authority and its chair, I would ask that Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mitchell, go ahead and ask your team to introduce themselves.
Certainly. My name is Malcolm Mitchell. I have the privilege of being Chair of Economic Development Authority.
And I'm Neil Barber, Vice Chair of the Economic Development Authority. And I have the privilege of working with these fine folks on Economic Development Authority.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant.
Good evening. Mr. Harmon, Economic Development Authority.
Good evening. Teresa Saunders Smith, Treasure Economic Development Authority.
Sir.
Good evening. Brian Donahue, I'm the Director of Economic Development and the Secretary for the Economic Development Authority. I would also like to recognize we have Mr. Charlie Baumann, our Assistant Director and Assistant Secretary for the EDA here tonight as well.
Thank you, sirs. And real quick, I want to acknowledge our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter, and our city attorney, Mrs. Leland Green Williams. Thank you, guys, for being here. With that, sir, Mr. Mitchell, I turn the floor over to you.
Okay. We'll do our call of the order. Brian, if you could just roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Barber?
Here.
Mrs. Saunders Smith?
Here.
Mr. Brown is absent. Mrs. Cherry is absent. Mr. Harmon?
Here.
Chair, we do have a call.
Well, I'm excited about this meeting. Before we get started, I'd just like to say, this weekend, I had an opportunity to go to the Norfolk Jazz House. It's one of those really beautiful days in Hampton Roads where the music is great, the weather is great, sitting on a river. As I came back across on the ferry, I said to myself, I cannot wait till this is developed. Where we have a boutique hotel with a rooftop bar, retail space downstairs, families walking along the river excited. And if that's going to happen, it's going to be happening because of all of us in this room. But it will be a magnificent day, and I cannot wait, you know?
You're here.
Yes. So today, what we'd like to accomplish is to communicate the status and opportunities for the key economic development initiatives in Portsmouth, talk about the roles of the EDA-owned property, identify action items and next steps. And while it's not up here, I think we need to have a healthy conversation around the Greenville trip. I think a lot of people have some thoughts and opinions in how we can take some of those experiences and hopefully transfer some of them to Portsmouth. I'm going to start off talking about the EDA initiatives. For those who may not be aware of some of the programs that we do, the big one that we do is the Business Investment Grant Program, which falls into three categories: Business Development, Business Acceleration, and Real Property Investment Grant. The Business Development Grant was up to $2,000 for new businesses and startups. In fiscal year '25, we granted 25 businesses $50,000. The Business Acceleration Grant is for expanding businesses between three to 10 years. We provided 10 grants for $46,000. And Real Property Investment Grants, up to $25,000 for property improvement, we provided 22 grants for $352,000. And I will say that every quarter, I have an opportunity to meet with some of the recipients of those grants, and they're just wonderful stories about how they have been able to utilize those funds to not only make a difference in their business, but in a difference for the citizens in Portsmouth. The second thing that we do is the Small Business Contracting Institute, where we partner with Hampton Roads Small Business Development Center to assist people in procurement and contract training, which is a pretty complicated process to navigate through, and this has certainly been helpful to them. The next one, which we are really, really excited about, the commissioners have been thinking about this for quite a while. We have had a number of businesses come to us and say, capital is a major challenge for us. And so we are pleased to launch the first small business working capital loan program, a low-interest loan to businesses up to $50,000. And I think that's going to be a significant play for us in the city of Portsmouth. The next one is the Bloom Pop-Up. We wanted to figure out a way to highlight Portsmouth grown businesses. And so we worked with Bloom to set up a retail shop and gave them an opportunity to get exposure, learn how to market their products, and also manage their inventory. The hope was that some of these businesses would grow strong enough that they could stand up on their own in different facilities. And we've had some great success with this program, to the extent that we went another year with the program. So if you haven't had a chance to stop by the Bloom Pop-Up, please do. There's really some nice Portsmouth grown products there. And last is the Portsmouth Workforce Development Support. They're probably going to, as I understand, they're going to give a presentation later on, but we have done a lot with that group, up to $100,000 this year. And it's a really, really powerful program that I think you'll be excited to hear some of their initiatives. So as we move to the big boys, if you will, which is the Crawford Bay Waterfront Development, the Link District, and the Entertainment District. But we're just going to talk briefly about the roles. EDA Board reports into city council. We have advisory relationship with the city staff at the EDA, and it has been invaluable, both in terms of legal advice, making sure that the properties that we purchase are done correctly. And quite frankly, we would not be as successful as we are without their support. So it's like publicly, thank you, guys, for everything that you do to make this possible. So, let's talk about the waterfront development. Recent efforts by the city council and EDA have renewed focus on the development of city-owned waterfront property, new mixed-use development, and to generate new revenues to the city. Phase one, we're looking at probably greater than a $366 million investment, particularly with the tailwinds out there and tariff issues, but it gives us a sense of what this project might cost us. We're looking at potentially 300 multifamily units, a boutique hotel, maybe 180 hotel rooms, 60,000 square feet retail space, 1065 parking spaces, and 40,000 office space. And office space could change. As you know, many, many companies are working from home, so that's just a projection, but I'm not sure how realistic that will actually be. It's on the former Holiday Inn site and other city-owned property for solicitation of development interests, so we've been able to consolidate a decent amount of property to make this attractive for a developer. Site has been assembled and cleared for development with the exception of the Harbor Court parking garage. And that's, just to give you some background, there are about 250 spaces there for those tenants that were responsible for them to have a place to park. So we're going to have to work with the city to get an appropriate location. Obviously, we don't want them to have to walk two miles to get back to their condos or apartments, so that's something that we'll be working closely with the city to address. Opportunity for new housing, commercial and entertainment spaces, and a hotel. We're hopeful that we'll get a really cool boutique hotel on that property that would really stand up very nicely. And as I said in the opening comments, it would be great to have a rooftop bar where you're looking over at the Norfolk. It would be absolutely gorgeous. The other issue is that the solicitation of developers to request for interest process, and we'll go into more detail of that on the second page. So this is phase one. Phase two, as you know, is the Civic Center, City Hall properties, and the demolition of the former jail courthouse complex. And it's my understanding that that's well on target to happen relatively soon.
Yes.
The waterfront development, let's talk about phase one. We've done a market analysis, geotechnical analysis, an environmental analysis, and a property appraisal. We also have procured AECOM to help us in the development of consulting services. AECOM is a nationally-known company. They've also done a number of projects in Richmond and in Greenville, South Carolina, so they've worked with small and mid-sized cities, so they bring a lot of experience to the table. Some of the timeline, we've already met. We've established the city council/EDA project committee in June. We finalized the procurement of real estate development consultant for project support. That's been completed in August. The next task up is the city/EDA cooperation agreement, and then we'll go through what you normally go through when you're soliciting the package development, the RFI. If it all works on this timeline, we'll have a developer selected in November 2026. Seems far, but it's clearly not when you consider the amount of work that has to be done with this. And AECOM, we really got a good deal with them. We got them for $167,000. That is a fantastic price. We're certainly excited about them. And as we go through this process, we will provide updates on a regular basis to the city council and the appropriate people in the project. The waterfront development, next slide. Some of the key factors influencing the project, a premier mixed-use development site in Hampton Roads and the East Coast. I don't think nobody can match what we have to offer. Nobody. We already know there's a demand for housing. We have seen just a spike in housing in Portsmouth, and also a demand for additional hotel rooms. We recently had a study for Old Town to talk about dining options that were available. They came back and said there's a significant need for more retail and more restaurants in Portsmouth. And the leakage, which was the number of people who go outside of Portsmouth because they're not able to find the restaurants that they are looking for, was significant. So I think that the market is telling us there's much that we can do here in Portsmouth to meet that consumer demand. Some of the challenges, obviously, is the onsite parking requirements that I talked about, the availability of the utility infrastructure. Do we have the power lines, the water lines, the sewer lines for a project of this size? And obviously, the rising construction and financing cost is an unknown variable that we'll have to address. Finally, next up is the Link District. Really excited about that. I think the Link District is really built on the spirit of Lincolnville, the people who, in difficult situations, created a retail banking place of comfort and inspiration. And in that spirit, we want to recreate that in the Link District. As you can see, we own, city/EDA owns quite a few properties within the Link District. We certainly want to obtain more, but I think we're off to a relatively good start. And it provides us with a unique opportunity to determine how each one is utilized to encourage economic investment and revitalization. We have had a number of conversations with commissioners in terms of what that role should look like. In the past, quite frankly, what we did, we would acquire a building, gut it up, spec it up for a developer to come in. Often, in my opinion, we ended up attracting some things that maybe didn't make sense. So this time around, we are trying to be selective in what goes into the Link District, and in some cases, we may have to be the one to kick-start it. And so that can be part of the broader conversation that we might have here tonight. Let's take a look at some of the properties that we have. They're pretty substantial. 1028 High Street is a really, it's an eyesore that will be torn down, and that's the good news. But it's a pretty sizable assemblage of property there, so I think we can certainly make that attractive to a developer. 1117, 1121, High Street is another. On the outside, quite frankly, it doesn't look the greatest, but it is huge when you go inside. So it lends itself to a number of things that we might be able to do there. 1220 High Street, which was the old Enterprise Store, we acquired that. We have, very close to signing up, or maybe we have already signed a roaster, and it's going to be a coffee shop. It's going to be totally refaced. It's not going to look like that, and I think when you see the final drawings, you will be excited as to what we have been able to do with that building. And we really wanted that building to kind of be a statement, to some degree, of what the quality of development that we're expecting in the Link District. And the last property we just purchased was the 934 High Street, which is also a really, really large building. And we're going to have to have a number of conversations in terms of what makes sense in that particular building. Those buildings also lend themselves to artwork that might be reflective of the Link, so that's another plus that we think will make sense there. EDA's role is obviously property acquisition and assemblage, so we try to put together as many properties as we can to make it attractive to a developer. We also have blight removal, so if it's a building that just looks really, really horrible, in some cases, we are able to remove it. Blight's a big thing, you know? And quite frankly, I think all of us are concerned that we don't want parts of the Link to look good, then other parts look bad. I think we're going to have to have a deeper conversation around blight. I believe there are some regulations, I believe, in the city ordinance that you can tax blighted property at a higher property rate. That may be something that we can look at, or some other things that I'm not aware of, but certainly, we need to address that. We have a lot of buildings that, quite frankly, people are using for storage.
That's right.
And they look horrible. And, you know, we're going to really have to put our heads together and figure out how to address some of those problems. But we think if we do it right, we will have business attraction and retention. And there's a lot of units going on in the Link. You have Bains Point Apartments, King's Landing. That's about 100 new housing units. Bains Point's 50, King's Landing's 49, and at 724 High Street, 12 units. So when you go down High Street, you can see the dirt being moved, and it really looks good, I think, in a couple, a year or so. It's going to be a dramatic change. And if we can support that with the appropriate type of retail, I think it's going to be a really beautiful statement there. Strategic alignment between business recruitment and innovation district plan. I think we're going to have to take a fresh look at maybe the zoning regulations as that area changes. A lot of the problems that we have, some of it has been zoned for vehicle paintings and stuff like that. We're going to have to look at that and try to rezone where it's appropriate and make sure that in the future, those types of businesses may not make sense for the Link District. Also, the infrastructure improvement, making sure that we have the water lines, the electricity available. And a nice thing is that that also has a high-speed internet, so that really opens up an opportunity maybe for some companies to take a real look at that area as well in the data centers. The other thing is the mobility and access. Right, what does that mean? Well, we're trying to figure out what is the best way, as these things are connected together, how do we move people from the waterfront to Old Town to the Link? Is that some technology, maybe we have a fleet of electric cars, you know, that transport people back and forth? Maybe we have a small bus that transports people back and forth? But I think it's an opportunity to move people around the Link, waterfront, Old Town, and use it as a marketing tool for customers and consumers. And Entertainment District. Wow, this has been a home run. It was a $348 million investment, 1,300 positions. In two years, the city has been, has received $39 million in revenue, and I think it's just going to go up. The Landing Hotel, the pictures are fabulous. I think it's just going to draw more people to Rivers Casino, and it's going to create at least a minimum of 60 new jobs. And the nice thing, I always look at businesses to see not only how they look the first year, but how do they look the second year? Do they still look fresh and clean? Is things painted? Does the property still look good? Is the grass still being cut? And I can say Rivers Casino has hit a home run on all of that. The place looks just like it did from day one, and that's really a testimony, I think, to their strong management team. Just an overview, we have a casino development agreement, covers five of the parcels, I think you can see them there. And these include two out parcels bordering Nissie Elliott Boulevard, and three parcels bordering south of Louise Lucas Drive. These parcels were conveyed on March 11th, and beginning four years after that date, when the casino parcel was conveyed, which will take it to March 11, 2026, EDA will have the right to solicit other developers to partner with Rush Street on the development of the remaining properties. Simply stated, they're okay with us bringing people to the table. I don't think we would have any opposition from them to bring someone that certainly would increase more traffic into the casino. However, eight years after that date, March 11, EDA will have the right to terminate the casino development agreement as to any remaining properties that Rush Street has not acquired. We have had limited engagement with them, not because they're not willing to work with us. I think they have been focused a lot on the Landing Hotel, and I think once they get that project up and running, we'll initiate additional conversations with them to see what types of services make sense in that area. So just to recap, we have a private committee. We've engaged with AECOM, a real estate consultant, who is going to help us draft up the information that's going to go out to potential developers. We have to do the EDA city council cooperation agreement on some parcels of land that are owned by the city to bring them under our umbrella, and then developer solicitation process. As we look at the Link District, really would like to have some conversation around zoning that makes sense for what we expect from the Link District, and to ensure that we have the infrastructure to support whatever businesses come down the pike. And in Entertainment District, we look forward to continuing to engage Rush Street on activities, businesses, and services that would make sense for the city to handle the casino. And here's the last one. So I'm just going to have a moment of silence, because we are asking for regular funds to be given to the EDA. I think we have demonstrated that we can get the job done, but it's not cheap. And we have been fortunate to have received some funds from the property that we sold to the casino, but the last property that we brought, I think it was almost $500,000. So we will go through the money that we have pretty quickly. So we are requesting that a set amount of funds be allocated to Economic Development Authority so we can continue to acquire the property in the Link District and other areas of the city, and make the improvements that we so desperately want to see. We can move to an open discussion around any things that you heard today, and also, I think it's a great opportunity to talk about the Greenville trip, maybe some of the things that you guys saw that we would like to maybe dig deeper into or maybe replicate here in the city of Portsmouth.
Thank you, Chairman Mitchell, and I really appreciate the presentation. Man, I can tell you, these are really exciting times. And as the chief visionary officer, which I will continue to coin myself as, we are in a very good position. So as we go through the discussion, I want everybody to really think about, now is our opportunity, not to think small. See, we can't make any small plans to do big things, and it's going to take some commitment, some vision. I will also say, and I want everybody to think about this as we go into the discussion, we will not have this opportunity again. And so it's imperative that we put a lot of thought and conversation into it as it relates to the way forward, because we won't get this opportunity probably in our lifetime again. But it can be, it will be transformational, and it will make this city a whole new city as it relates to development and people coming to our city. It will be an attraction. With that, Vice Mayor Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Chief Visionary Officer/Mayor. Well-stated. I agree with that. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, with stepping us through a strategic plan that I think we all will look forward to the day when it comes to fruition. You did say one thing that caught my attention, and that's blight tax. I believe we're allowed to increase our real estate tax, which is $130, up to 25% above that, which would be...
It's $124.
Uh, $124, I'm sorry. We're allowed to increase that up to 25% above the $124. So I believe, I don't recall any ordinance establishing that, but I think it's something we need to look into, because we've got blight that we need to deal with. It's costing us in a lot of different ways. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to look into that, and so we can hopefully implement something to that end. So, and when we talk about funding, that could be a source of funding and cleaning up our city, especially as we start developing the Link District. And there are areas, Lord knows, all of us can probably pinpoint areas all around the city that are blighted and have been blighted for way too many years. So hopefully, we can look at, look into passing an ordinance to that effect.
Absolutely. Counsel, I'm ready. Thomas, you have a call.
Thank you so much, Mayor. So I do have a question. Thank you for your presentation. I too am truly excited about the moves and the vision and the future, and I agree, a rooftop, a rooftop bar would be great. And also, before I go into my question, I agree with Vice Mayor that we should move forward and look into establishing some sort of blight ordinance. It won't only help... It won't only help the future developments, but help our current areas and neighborhoods as well. I know that Vice Mayor's been sending emails, like kind of highlighting some of those areas that we should look into. My first question is from your last ask, you about the request for the EDA direct funds. So how do you get the funds now? Like, how is EDA funded now?
It's funded through the seller property.
So just through the seller property? So you sell property, then you acquire property and keep... Okay. All right. Thank you. And then I have a note here. I don't know how to ask this question. As you were going through the Link development, you mentioned that there have been some issues like around the zoning and maybe looking into updating some of the zoning, and that's been an issue. Someone, I think Dr. Russell's here, I'm not sure who to direct this question to, but how, how does EDA align with the Planning Commission, especially like with the comprehensive plan that we should be, future development should align with the comprehensive plan? How are those two things meshing right now? I think we're up for a new cycle of an updated comprehensive plan. So how are we meshing that together as we are looking towards the future, building for our new vision, but also updating like big picture comprehensive plan for the city? How are these two things talking to each other? I guess I should...
I'm going to defer that.
Okay. And I'm looking at Brian and Dr. Russell, I'm not sure who to ask that to.
You want to try it, or I...
You please.
Okay. This comprehensive plan, when you put it together, it takes a lot of different pieces. And all of those pieces, we worked through our planning group to make sure those things work together. But there's meetings with all the different entities in our city, including a public entity, where people just get to say what they want to say about it. But all these things are factored into the plan as it's being developed. It's not a, it's not a one track, a one, one group that does...
Right.
We have a group that's responsible for actually putting it all together. But all groups in our city is going to be part of the development.
But the planning, so Dr. Russell's Planning Department, they are part of this new committee, like any committee that's for future development for the Link, whether it's for the Crawford, they are part of that discussion so that when we're doing one development, it has still the big picture and big feel of the overall city comprehensive plan. That's, that's what I'm trying to understand and get a better idea. Because if we change the zoning, as we should, to make things, development easier for the Link, how are we updating the overall comprehensive plan to make sure that it still aligns with the overall big picture strategy for the whole city of Portsmouth? It's what I'm asking.
Ask it one more time in a different way.
How do we make sure that we're not just changing things here and there, but we're still keeping a big picture mind strategically for the overall city? Each development has its own feel, but overall Portsmouth, we should have an overall big vision that aligns with the comprehensive plan. How is that, how is that alignment happening as we're approaching these big projects that we're doing?
Every project that happens in this city has to go through the planning department. There's no project that happens in this city that don't go through planning.
Right.
There's already a future land use map that we look at and say, okay, this is what we think is the best and most proper use for any project or any land that's in the city. Even if we don't own the land, we still think we know what's the best and most proper use for that land. So as all these things are coming together, we're measuring it against those. Remember, every project starts with planning.
Right.
So they show up at planning, planning looks at...
The comprehensive plan?
Yes, and the future use maps. And say, okay, yeah, this, this works or it don't work.
Okay.
So it's not half-hazard.
I just ask that because I think we're in the cycle for updating our comprehensive plan, right? So that's, right, so that's what I'm thinking about, like, we're in the cycle for updating our comprehensive plan. Are these two things kind of aligning with where we're going, big picture, citywide, and then these individual projects? That's kind of where my mind, my question was stemming from.
The short answer is absolutely.
Okay. And then my, my last question for now is, with all of this, you know, I'm going to always, Mr. Carter, this is probably for you too, always going to have that MWBE hat on and how we're aligning or incorporating MWBE in these future developments. Can you all speak to that a bit and how we're looking to approach that process? Since it's new for the, the program is new for the city, how is that being incorporated to all these different developments that are happening, especially the waterfront, which is huge and huge opportunities for those MWBE, you know, contractors, subcontractors, et cetera?
MWBE is a part of our DNA. That's what we're wanting to do. Everything that we do is part of our procurement process, not just for large developments, but for small is also. So we have a young lady who is taking care of that whole. She's the one who manages, she collects all the data, she give us the reports. We will have a score for ourselves about how we're reaching our goals or not reaching our goal. She's implementing programs to help minority businesses or small, even small businesses, not just minority businesses, so that they can take a part of our procurement process. We're developing those programs now, educating them, educating the internal staff about how we need to look at things when we're doing our procurement.
So is that process part of this like timeline for the waterfront? Is that process, like when we talk about, you know, solicitation for developers, is that process, that program that, you know, the scorecard that we're keeping, is that part of this current process?
It's part of every dollar we're spending in this city.
So that new person is part of this process?
They don't, they don't sit on the board.
Okay, so...
However.
It goes through the office.
Yes, ma'am. They're the ones who says, okay, this is what the goal is for this project, or we need or not meeting that goal.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
I may add with the Business Investment Grants Program, 70% went to SWAM. The second grant program, Business Acceleration, 60%, and the $25,000 grant for property was 32%.
No.
So we've done an outstanding job...
Yes, you have.
...of making sure that we offer programs that are reflective of the community.
I will say you all have done a great job, and I want to give you additional kudos for even the Bloom. I shop there a lot. I see a lot of, you know, small, you know, women, minority businesses in Bloom, blooming and growing their businesses. My, my only concern was that, you know, we're about to put a lot of investment into development in the city and just wanted to make sure that we, we have that door open. I'm not thinking small, I'm thinking big businesses that can contribute to the development and the investment that we're going to place into these properties. So that's, I just want to always put that on the table. And thank you, Paul, for answering that for me.
Well, I might just add that I think that's obviously a big question. And what we try to do is size up what are our shortfalls. So I'll just say, for example, that maybe we don't have enough brick masons, you know? And maybe they're saying, I can't grow my business because I don't have capital while we started the capital program. But we also need to have a discussion with existing brick masons and position them so that they can be eligible for some of those contracts, or they can work with people that have those contracts.
Correct.
I think, I speak for the commission, we are deeply committed to that process, and we will do whatever we can to size up and lift up where it makes sense for small businesses to participate in that.
Absolutely.
And I would like to also add that we are always constant looking at any obstacles that will prevent minorities from being a part of the process. And this is why we support trainings and all kind of things to bring them in the loop, to get them certified. So that is our eyes on that constantly.
Yep. Thank you.
Councilman Dotson, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I have a couple of questions here. Apologize, I have a cold, so I'm gonna... So when we did the infrastructure catch-up at the beginning of our session with, as new council persons, I ran through some of the numbers. And a rough estimate is that we're about $3 billion behind in infrastructure. When I look at some of these projects that you're bringing along, I estimate that we need an additional revenue of $50 million a year just to catch up, but it'd be nice if we could have 100. And I look at what you're doing here as just an incredible catch-up towards those numbers of getting us there. But I roughly estimate, and I don't know how close I am, that we really need $50 million more a year in the budget to really do the things, a minimum, to get where we want to do. And I'm concerned that any, we are a poverty-blite-stricken city, that the cleanup that you guys are doing desperately needs to be done, desperately. And we are supporting a very low end of housing, and these projects, I think, need to be targeted higher end of housing so that we can support the lower-ending houses that we need. Because you can't continue to tax the poor to feed the poor. It can't be done. We need some higher-end businesses and some higher-end houses. So when I look at the Crawford Bay Development, I look at it and I go, I hope this is going to be higher-end. I think that conversations that I've had with you say that it's going to be... I'm concerned, though, that the Harbor Towers development in there is going to age out a lot quickly. And I'm wondering, has it been taken into consideration that we should incorporate them into the project ownership, or we should ask the contractor to also incorporate them to, as that building is severely aging out, to complete this project on that whole block? And encourage the developer to say, hey, listen, let's incorporate that into the project so that that doesn't age out at a far end where we can't support it with some odd-type development later on?
Can you define age out? I'm not questioning, what do you mean by that?
I'm not, I don't have the, I wasn't prepared to bring the exact numbers, but that building is aging. It won't be here as long as the project that you're going to build right next to it. And it'll be surrounded by that project, which will make it difficult to renovate or replace that, replace that project as time goes by. So it'd be nice if we could consider bringing them into this project and consider possibly making them partners with the new developer, possibly demolishing that building and rebuilding with the new. It'd be wonderful, wonderful if they could be part of it. The second part of that project right there, I'd love to see it, and I know that I've had talks with one or two of you about it, if we could target high-end yacht people. We need some rich people in this city to help support some of the projects that we have. It'd be so nice if some of the waterfront along here with this project was considered to be made available so that people that do own large yachts that come through, we're ground zero, marker zero is where we are, if you know navigation terms. And it'd be so nice if we could have some of the big yachts, the big rich people. And although they may not generate that income, they'll generate the spark that will generate some of that income. And they might even buy condos in this, were the two projects with the Marina and this project also somewhat friendly and integrated along with the two. This project, in my estimation, will bring, when you all say 366 million, I'm thinking that's about $5 million in property tax revenues. Am I close in that number? When I say somewhere, give or take, something in there, and possibly some others with the retail volume that we're having in there. When it comes to Entertainment District, it looks like the hotel's going to bring us around another $1 million in property taxes, and the hotel taxes bring us another $1 million. So we're well on that way towards what I would consider the goal. I'd like to see it, that minimum $50 million. Well on the way. This is really good planning on you guys to get us toward that. What I think is holding us back, though, is the zoning for these districts. I'm, you know, inside, my insides are going, gosh, can we get the zoning things going faster and faster and faster so other businesses can come into these zones and say, and say, this is the type of business that we're looking for? How can we attract them? Because I keep asking questions about what's the zoning for these districts? And it doesn't seem like it's being pursued as fast as I'd like. I know government moves slower than me as a person, as a businessman in the community. We tend to move a little bit faster. But I get a little anxious when I look at it and go, can we accelerate that? And is there anything we can do as a council, I think, to accelerate that zoning so it could be defined more closely to start building interest in these districts? In the Link District, I had a, somebody come to me and said they had been interested in a piece of property, but were told that it was in a flood zone. And in order to build in it, they would have to elevate the property. And I didn't know the truth of that statement, or if it was actually substantiated. So I wanted to throw that out there and see if you all had heard anything about there being some elevation problems in that area that we, as a city, might need to navigate in order to make properties in that area more business-friendly.
I can't speak for the entire Link District, but I can say the property that we have acquired flood, is flood zone without an issue to my knowledge.
Do you have an address for the property?
No, I don't. That's what I'm saying, it was second-hand information, and I don't, can't substantiate it, but I wanted, I wanted to try and see were it a known problem in that district? Is it something that we, as a city, need to address? If it's not, then let's throw it off the board and ignore it. But it was a second-hand information that I got from somebody. But anyway, so those were the issues.
Councilman Dotson, I will say that King's Landing, which is going to be priced market competitive, I think it's going to be in the...
250, maybe?
No, no. 300. 300. So that, if that project goes well, it certainly will introduce higher-priced condominium departments, et cetera. And we have tried to, in the property that we've had, we've tried to be considerate to make sure we have balance between affordable housing and market-rate housing.
We are the affording, affordable housing capital of the Tidewater area, I believe, already.
I don't, I don't know if that's a plus or a minus, as long as it's quality housing. But I can say that we have tried to have an effective blend.
Yes. The last thing I had to comment on was, when you're asking for money, I don't see any amount here. Are you waiting for us to come up with that number? Or do you have numbers that you're willing to ask us for? I'd like, it's hard to act on generalities, but I'd love to see some specifics.
We certainly can do that. We just didn't think it was appropriate in this form, too.
Understood. I'm just looking, looking for it in the future. Would love to see the numbers, what you're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor.
Brian, you have the floor.
Thank you, EDA. Thank you, Chairman. Wonderful presentation and echoing the mayor's sentiment that this is a very exciting time to be in this seat, and I'm really looking forward to watching all of this come together. Couple of questions, some small, some more conversational. Can you guys describe the difference between blight and storage? So we said that some of these properties are just, people own them and they're just storing stuff in them, and they've done that for years. How is that different than blight, or is that the same? Maybe that's for the manager. Not you, Chairman, but maybe that's for the manager.
Blight is a definite, a term that's defined so that we can do, well, not so that we can do things, but it identifies property in your city that has been derelict or gone without maintenance. I think what they're talking about with storage is there are some buildings in this area that's maybe not necessarily blighted, but you can't really use them for anything else because the owner of the building has stored material in the building. Two separate tracks of things. And it could have blighted a building that has storage in it, but storage don't necessarily mean it's blighted.
So are those two separate things that we need to be looking at? We need to encourage through Vice Mayor Moody's initiative possibly of removing blight, but also encouraging property owners to repurpose their spaces? Okay, so those are two separate issues. That's sort of what I was arriving at. Very excited about the opportunity to create art and new spaces. And I watched your meeting with the branding discussion on how to brand the Link District. Really, really curious how we're going to link these three spaces together. And I love hearing the idea of some creative transportation. So I just love to say that I think we have a lot of opportunities here for showing environmental awareness, things like biking paths, walkability, environmentally friendly transportation. Also, branding, I think it's very cool to have the branding idea for the Link District. And maybe as we look at High Street and the waterfront, maybe that's something that we do in those areas, too, so that they're defined, but they're sort of also drawing people for different purposes, but you can still get from one to the other. Also, would really like to see us communicate our progress on all three of these very closely. I think there's a lot of curiosity across the city about where do we stand on this, how quickly, and we're all so eager for this to happen, that if we could make some communication milestones to put out information so that people are aware, this is the phase we are with waterfront, this is the phase we are with Link. I think that would give people an opportunity to really buy in, support the progress, certainly promote us as a city that is on the move, which is coming off of our state-of-the-city dress. So if we could discuss ways that we can do that, that would be, and certainly, we all can help you with that as council members going to civic league meetings and such, updating residents on what your status is. We loosely talked about getting around the topic of Airbnbs and with the idea of a new hotel coming to the waterfront and also a new hotel coming to the casino. Curious how that all fits in, and that's just something that maybe we can just think about as we have that conversation down the road. about as we have that conversation down the road. What have other cities done with Airbnbs, and how does that play into our ideas to develop more hotel space? And curious what, it may be very early phases for the Entertainment District, and thank you for letting us know how the casino fits in with the properties surrounding. Do we have any very early ideas on what could possibly go on those properties? I don't even know where to begin to sort of imagine what would go there, but is there any discussion yet, or are we, are we too early on that?
I think we're a little bit too early on it. One of the things that we talked about was maybe looking at some of their existing properties to see what they have around Pittsburgh. I think they have something.
Connected.
Connected, yeah.
Connected, okay. So it's still, it's still early for that? So we're not thinking like water park or something? [laughing].
I think in that situation, what you're looking for is something that complements the.
Yeah, of course. The casino, yeah. Okay.
I think, you know, correct me if I'm wrong on this, they, the reason they're wanting to have some input on this is so that they can kind of make sure that the thing that we're looking at putting there, well, the thing that we approved to get put there, actually fits within what their, their model is, so that they don't really create an issue for their business model.
Right. Last question. As we look at the Link in particular, and it takes some time, it's going to take some time to get these projects off the ground, we have talked about the area that has murals, mural festival. Are there opportunities for temporary type parks or recreation that if some of that is cleared out, some of the blight is taken care of, that we can, in the meantime, have maybe something like a dog park, or an event space, not an event space?
Skate park.
They want to get into that right now. Some sort of, yeah, pop-up park or pop-up opportunities, concerts, things like that.
That's an ongoing conversation that we have, how we can utilize the property until we get to developing. Joe is leading up a task, Commissioner Harmon working with the Portsmouth Art Center on murals, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, so funny you bring that up. We actually are working on that right now. We own the property at 1028 High Street. We call it affectionately the Holmes Property. It's three buildings, it'll be demolished, hopefully by the end of the year, right? Hopefully. With that, because of its proximity to King's Landing and Bane's Point, we don't want them to see blight out of their window when they're paying over $300,000 for a condo, or even affordable housing. It's a new area, it's a new epicenter for them to live. We want it to be very welcoming. So what we want to do is the Link Mural Park, where it's a, it's very conceptual right now. If any of you remember the, the concept that happened over in Norfolk before they built the main, they had a temporary park called the plot. There was a issue with the historic preservationists when they had to go in with building the main, and they wanted to reconfigure that entire space. It took time. It was a construction zone, a war zone. They, City of Norfolk took properties, or took elements that they already existed, from the old Granby Mall, when Granby Street was pedestrian-friendly. They had old potters and plants and benches. They took all of these things, repurposed it into a new park. They had the art center come out and really, literally like a boots-on-the-ground project just to get it so it looks appealing until development happened. And what happened? The main was built, and that park moved to the Neon District, and it's still there now. So similar to this, the Link Mural Park would be right across the street. It would face where the murals are now. There's an alleyway where all the murals are. It would be a focal point. Due to the interest for development, we have to leave the concrete slabs on these buildings, on the foundation. Okay? That leaves a selling point for us to do, like a turfed area, mark. I am envisioning, like, maybe even partnering with the Mayersk to bring some shipping containers to paint them, maybe a small stage that's very visible, so it's visible from all sides, but just a place where the community can be proud of and see that something is happening in the Link until we really get development. We can use existing things. We have the jail about to be torn down. I've been looking and eyeing those old planners from 1968. They belong in the Link District. It will take a move of God to move them, but we're going to figure that out. I can envision the letters being bold on those planners, Link, using our support Portsmouth Art Community, the historic, you know, Commission, Fine Arts Commission, like, there's so many outlets that we can hone into to get that going. And guess what? When development happens, everything there is transient. So we will leave there and go to the next block that needs redevelopment. So we're working on that right now.
Wonderful. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Did a great job.
Councilman, so you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I want to roll into the Greenville discussion, because we saw a lot of things in Greenville that directly tie into the presentation that you just finished, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the presentation, but I appreciate that the EDA joined us on this trip to Greenville along with the manager and city staff. It was exciting and eye-opening. We, so I'm just going to hit some, some, what I thought were highlights from, from the trip to stimulate the discussion. So starting with the city manager, one of the things that she told us was, while they have done a lot of work to bring new development in, they made a decision that they want to invest in the people that are already there. So y'all have a $25,000 facility improvement fund. She said, eh, we're getting ready to open, cut the ribbon on our property where we spent quarter of a million dollars on facade improvement. Now, so the manager and I were talking about this earlier today. They're a town of 78,000, so how they found a quarter of a million dollars, which is 10x what, what we're spending to, to help our business owners. We got some homework to do to try to understand that, and I know he's following up with his counterpart down there to, to, to see how they're, how they're punching above their weight, I think was, was your description. Both the city manager and the mayor during the walk-around said the key to their growth and development was getting people into downtown. So the fact that, that our Phase One and Phase Two on the waterfront are aimed to be mixed-use, the fact that we have housing going into the, the Link District are all right on track with, with the things that both the mayor and the city manager said were key to them bringing residents into those areas, and, and that promotes the foot traffic and all of the things that come from, from having new customers living in, in those areas. The city manager said to, to the comment about affordable housing, city manager said that they include a 20% incentive to developers to include 20% of their developable housing to be, I'll call it workforce housing. So affordable seems to have a bad connotation. The point here was, it's, it's not cheap housing, it's quality housing made available for public safety folks and teachers and, you know, people that, that maybe can't afford a mortgage payment on a $400,000 home. And both the mayor and the city manager talked about the importance of public-private partnerships. I always had in my head, so PPP means big millions and millions of dollars. The city manager actually said, a couple hundred thousand in incentives is the difference between getting the developer in and not getting the developer in. And so the notion that we don't necessarily have to, to be in this for millions and millions of dollars as a city, that, that there are things that, that we need to look at to, to sweeten some of these deals that, that will maybe make the difference, at least in their experience, the difference between a developer choosing to bring their development there or, or to take it somewhere else. And during our walk-around with the mayor, he, he said, you know, number one priority is people, getting people down there. And he described a businessman who, who came into downtown, bought up several buildings, and immediately turned the upstairs into residences, high-quality residences. Well, we got buildings just like that building, all up and down our High Street, and so there's, and we won't have to wait a long time, we just got to get the right people with the right motivation and convince them that turning our upstairs and along High Street into those kind of residences can, can help us turn the corner.
Yep, thank you.
It was interesting, I think, really to all of us, the streetscape along their Main Street. So lots of landscaping and landscaping plans, very green, big trees, lots of shade, the sidewalks were all shaded, but more than just the big trees and shading the sidewalks, which we have, they have landscaping in front of all the buildings, landscaping between the sidewalk and the street. I mean, it was pretty impressive to see, and it just kind of gave you that warm, cozy, this is a place to take a walk. And, and there's things, I think, particularly as we're getting ready to do our waterfront development, where we want people to stroll along our waterfront. But as we talked about while we were down there, the waterfront development that we've done so far is, is kind of this stark concrete, and you stand out in the, the 80-badillion-degree sunshine with no trees. And so as we're thinking about our waterfront development, figuring out, how do we take , take aboard the things that we saw in Greenville and, and leverage those to make them work? We have a coffee shop going into the Link. One of the very first businesses in their downtown was that, that business guy that put the residents upstairs, as he was remodeling the building, he discovered a basement, and the basement became a coffee shop. And the lady who was a coffee shop, coffee cart lady turned into the coffee shop lady and has been running that coffee shop for 30 years. So again, kind of, we, we have business people like that in our farmer's market every Saturday that are looking for these kind of opportunities to go from a tent and awning into brick and mortar, and, and so, you know, working collaboratively, I think we can, we can help figure that out. Mr. Harmon mentioned putting Conex boxes over in the Link. So I know Mr. Donahue's met with a lady who's interested in bringing freight farming to Portsmouth. Turns out, we don't have zoning that allows that over in the Link. So as we're looking at zoning, we need to take a look at these, so makers, what do we need to do differently to accommodate makers? What do we need to do differently to accommodate commissary kitchens? And the kind of things that we've been talking about, innovative that we want to put into the Innovation District, but that our zoning right now kind of has us aced out from, from being able to do that. We spent some time with, with a couple of their city council people, and kind of the punchline from them was, don't think small, go big. So like, go big or go home. Their encouragement was, if you think you're thinking big, think even bigger. So, so as we're rolling into some pretty big projects, we, we just need to, to stay thoughtful and, and continue to think big. And then to, to Councilwoman Bryant's comment about telling the story. So we had a discussion about, it's time for us to take charge of telling our story. So we got a lot of good story that's getting ready to explode, and we can either tell it, or we can let somebody come in and, and tell it for us. And you can be sure, if we tell it, we, we get to control the narrative, and we get to talk about the positives and not focus on, on the negatives. And so, so it's going to be really important, as we do all of this, to, to grab hold and, and tell our own story. And I think the manager and his marketing team are already thinking about ways to do that, including making sure that we have scripts so that we're all, as we've talked about before, all singing off the same sheet of music, so when we go engage, whether it's a Civic League, or the Realtors Association, or whoever invites us to come and talk, that we're, we're all telling the same story with the same facts and figures. And I know Councilman Dodson likes numbers, so by golly, we're going to put some numbers in there to, to make sure we're all telling the same number story. So there's some, some things, and I'd be interested, any of the three of you got a chance to, to take that long bus ride, I'd be interested to, to hear your perspectives on what you guys saw.
I was impressed by the city. I know, I did a lot of walking back and forth down their Main Street, just looking at some of the resources and some of the repurposing, or some of the similarities between Portsmouth and Greensville. One of the things I noticed that we lack here is, other than just the Entertainment District, are like venues. They have placemaking areas in their downtown area that are venues and that draw attraction. They have a stadium, baseball team. They said it's not a very good baseball team, but people show up to the games for the Hot Dogs. They have the Peace Center, which is what was equivalent to what our Chrysler Hall was, kind of a entertainment center where they have plays and concert things and whatnot going on. So the, the district, the area is very walkable, very friendly. It was almost eerie because everybody was so proud of being in front of the city. You could talk to people on the street, and they would know the history of the city and be able to explain to you how the city came about being the way that it, that it is now. And like the councilman said, I was very impressed with the, just the landscaping and the overall facade of the, the city. I even went around trying to look for bad areas. But I did find a common link between Portsmouth and Greensville. They have an entertainer there, Peg Lee Johnson, they have a statue of him there, and at the bottom of his statue, there's a quote from Ruth Brown. So that's a, like a link, an, an entertainment link between those two cities.
Interesting. And I was going to say that, I too was impressed with the streetscape, the landscaping. And so they said that one of the first things they did was to hire a landscape architect. So that there was a conformity, a unity of everything that was going on, and that you could see, and you could see that theme, you know, as you were going on. Also, they, you were talking about the people who knew, were so knowledgeable of what was going on in their city. They actually developed an institute, and all of the people who worked in the downtown and the areas, they became certified tourist ambassadors, so they knew about the city. They actually, you know, and they were friendly and, and really willing to tell you about their city. A lot of the owners that I talked to and some of the businesses came there before the big boom, and they saw, what they saw there was the potential and the landscaping and the streetscape. That's what made them want to come and bring their business there. So there are a lot of things that we can do prior to the big development getting there. I just, I was just very impressed with it. It's just the feel. It was just the feel that you got when you were, were there. One of the big pieces with me is signage. Everything, they had the uniformity of signage, you know, you could see, everything was just neat. They positioned it so that you could see it way down the street or right on the street. So, and, and I asked them whether or not they had some rules or how you would do your, 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 the facing of your building, because it was nothing shabby. Everything was very neat and very clean, and they offered incentives for people to, to maintain their building, to, to, to do their, the face of their buildings. I think cleanliness is just, I can't, I can't say enough about cleanliness. And they told us that they had a dedicated staff that were just for those particular areas. They were there at four o'clock in the morning, they were.
Power washing the street.
They were power washing. They were cleaning. Those are the kind of things that you can do to prepare yourself, to get people in that mode of wanting to come downtown and to bring their business there.
So the mayor mentioned a very profound statement in finding your waterfall. That goes back to, they had this bridge that was a, you know, highway bridge that literally hid one of their hidden gems, which was a waterfall. It was a very controversial time, I was told, as he told, in the 90s with them either replacing the bridge or removing it to expose this waterfall. replacing the bridge or removing it to expose this waterfall and to build on it with like a park and nature scene. The nature won, and it became a focal point for the entire city, to the point where there was a developer that came to Greenville, and he didn't even own the property, but he said, I want this property. And he bought it and built a brand-new hotel there within three or four years. We need to find our waterfall in Portsmouth. We have more water than Greenville has. I mean, just putting it out there. And what they've, and another person said, what they've done with a little bit of water, we have an entire Elizabeth River right here that is underutilized. To your point, we want more boating access by swimming point. We want to see that area a little bit more lively, with multiple people and ethnicities, and everyone enjoying what we have to offer. When people are in Portsmouth, they look at Norfolk, it's one of the best views in Hampton Roads. How do we tap into that? There should be, there should be ship restaurants, that are ships made out of restaurant, you know, repurposing what we have. One other thing that they also did, they embraced the old. They didn't just bulldoze everything that was here. Portsmouth has the largest collection of historic homes and properties from here to Charleston or here to Alexandria. We should embrace that. Yes, blight is a thing, but there's also a way to keep blight and turn it into something beautiful. The last thing we want to do in this, especially with the Link District, people may walk or drive down High Street and say, oh, the blight and this and that. There's beauty in that if it's done properly. If you look at Richmond, Chaco Bottom was a very dilapidated property. And look at it now, there's food vendors, it's alive all the time. They've taken an old area and made it something new and gave it a new purpose. The last thing we want, which is not what Portsmouth is about, we don't want a cookie-cutter city. We're not here to build a Greenbrier or a town center. We already have that. We should embrace what we have and build upon that. And Greenville was a very important opportunity for us to see that. Now, there were some challenges because the population demographics were not quite the same as Portsmouth. Their split was about
Eighty-twenty, right?
Yeah, it was like 78 to 20 percent, meaning 70 percent Caucasian, 20 percent African-American. There was a difference with the shift there. Not saying that that's a good or bad thing, it's just a challenge that we need to work with. We do have a higher poverty rate than Greenville had. We do that, that's an acknowledged challenge. But I don't see that as being an end-all, be-all. So it was a very enlightening trip, it was an eight-hour trip, to and fro, well, 12, what? 16 hours total? But the biggest piece was, you're right, with the training. It was obvious that there was training that had been done, that everyone knew about the basics of how to get where. If you ask anyone going down their main street, they knew exactly where everything was, with a smile. Imagine a piece of that here. And we have that, we have that family element right here. It's a small family right here in Portsmouth. We've just gotta really embrace that.
One final thing I'd like to say, I was really impressed with the repurposing of their buildings. I mean, banks that had been, you know, vacant for quite some time, and they turned it around. Gas stations, you know, they did a lot of repurposing that fit, you know, the overall scheme of the property.
Couple of takeaways that I had, and we'll kinda move on, because we are gonna have a follow-up meeting where we'll discuss more in detail and get everyone in the room to share those experiences and decide on the way forward. But a couple of real takeaways I had. So I had the privilege of talking with the folks before we even got there, and reading the book and understanding, think about this for a minute, just think about it. And the reason why I said think big, think about 150,000 people coming into your town every day. That is what the mayor said they have. So they have 150,000 people coming into their downtown proper every day. What if we had 10,000 more people, new people, coming down into our town to enjoy the amenities that we have? That's attainable, folks. And I submit to you that many of the things that Greenville had, you can't tell me that our people don't have pride in our community, but I believe what has happened over time, we've had to overcome bad decisions, bad leadership, and that's contributed to a mindset. And if we are going to get to the place that we desire to be, we're not far away. What took them 30 years as a concerted effort, and people have to keep in mind, Knox White has been the mayor for over 30 years, City of Greenville. Now, that means something. Because not only when you guys listen to the manager, what does she say he was? He's a lawyer by training, but he was a planner by thinking. And he brought together all of those things to determine what the community could look like with others, but he led the charge. And so what I want us to think about is, let's think about how we change our mindset on what we can become. We have the pride, as Joe just indicated, we have people, I was just downtown with a group, Bobby Dyer came to see me for lunch, and he brought the VP from Steel here to the City of Portsmouth, we're talking about doing some workforce development. She grew up in the City of Portsmouth. You know what she said about Portsmouth? I love my town. This town is such a beautiful town. And I was looking at her a little bit like I just listened, but that's the kind of love we have for our city. But what we've gotta do is, we've gotta raise the expectations and no longer accept not being our best. When they talked about, give you another example, when they talked about people taking pride in their downtown, so me and the mayor, we were walking, and everybody was walking with us. The mayor talked to the guys that were press watching, they said, what's up, Mayor? And he said, you know what, Mayor Glover, do you know these guys actually have a YouTube video? Where they're doing like a routine while they're power washing? And thousands of people come to watch it. Their busiest time is on a Sunday afternoon, when they have thousands of people in their downtown, engaging and shopping, other things. The point I'm trying to make, guys, is, it's good to go to a place like that and see where you wanna improve and perhaps where you wanna go, but most importantly, I'm gonna challenge this group and myself, we gotta be better. We gotta be better, because we've got a future to build in the city. And that means in every aspect. We listened to these folks, and I started chuckling to myself when the mayor said, so, you know what? We had 185 people come from Richmond, Virginia, see Greenville. We had 135 people from Baton Rouge to come see Greenville. You do know that Greenville was voted as the number-one best town in America. And that didn't happen overnight. So as we're looking to do and become what we endeavor to be, let's remember, it's gonna take us some time, and I will say, I like to be realistic, we're gonna have to make some tough choices. But as a point to what you said, here's my other takeaway, mixed-use development, right? Mixed-use development, residential retail, that's gonna, residential's gonna solve all your problems. If we had another 10,000 people downtown, we'd have to have better lighting, we'd have to have better security. Think about it, if we had 10,000 more people coming downtown every day with that expectation, we would have better restaurants, we would have better retail. And for the ladies in the group, I don't mean to be sexist, but I asked the question, I said, man, what kind of retail do we need? He said, lady retail. He said, lady retail.
Exactly right. That's what you saw when you walked the street.
He said, you need lady retail. And if you want upscale retail, if you want higher-end retail, guess what? You gotta put some higher-end people in those buildings. Now, that's not to say you don't have a mixed-income thing going on, but you better have some people, if you want, they have a, what's the name of that grocery store, Publix? They have a Publix downtown, they have a CVS. If you wanna attract that, then you better have the rooftops, and you better have the people walking on the street. That's the reality. And I think we're headed that way. But what we gotta do is coalesce around this vision. This group, this team, is responsible for doing that. I thank you, Malcolm, for bringing that up about the extra dollars, you know, we will work to see what that means. And here's why it's critically important, High Street corridor is our gateway. People can talk about, I know I hear people say, well, you always focus on High Street, no town, yes? Because guess what? That's gonna be our gateway. And it is our gateway. So we gotta focus on what's gonna bring us everything that we desire, which is gonna allow for us to help everybody else. Because here's the reality, once you bring more business, and you have public-private partnerships, and you have investors knocking on your door and saying, I wanna be in that corridor, guess what's gonna happen? You're gonna get more tax revenue, you're gonna get more people spending money, all across, it's gonna lift everybody. But to your point, we've gotta be very intentional and deliberate on how we manage that corridor. For example, we have some people in there now that it's gonna be hard to get rid of. And if we allow people in that corridor today, and I say people, or allow people that are there and they don't want to buy into the vision, we've gotta find a way to move it. And that's just a hard reality, and it requires tough decisions. We don't wanna negatively or adversely impact our citizens, but guys and girls, we have a vision for our future. And what that vision has to entail, it has to entail people getting on with the vision, and for those who don't wanna get on with it, we just gotta find another place for you to go to. And we have to be okay with that as leaders. I know some people think that, you know, everybody's gonna be on the trip, but everybody's not gonna be on the trip. And that's what I heard, that was my takeaway. It's a beautiful place with beautiful people, a lot of amenities, but when I really sat down and thought about it, we're a beautiful place, with a lot of beautiful amenities. Coming together as a group, and focusing on who are we, what are we, but it's gotta include people, man. And that was my takeaway. If we don't bring more people downtown, and we don't improve that corridor, then we might as well just go home. That's all we gotta say.
Second to motion.
Very true. And we'll talk more about it, as I said, we're gonna have a focus group and share our more in-depth information. They're gonna send us some stuff, so there will be a follow-up. Deborah's gonna be contacting everybody, and so we'll have everyone in the room here take part in that discussion, as well as some of the business owners that were on the trip as well. But I wanna thank you all for joining us, coming down and taking that 16-hour bus ride and eating at Cracker Bell and all that bad food we ate. No, it was good food, actually, but some would say that we ate too much. But that was just one place, we went to Panera too, so I'm gonna be a little bit fair on that point. But it's really, it was, I'm gonna say this, as the mayor of the City of Portsmouth, I was really proud of this group when we went there. And the mayor even said to me, he said, man, this is a good group of people. And so that left me with, when I left, I just felt really good about everybody who committed to do that, because you didn't have to. It took time and it took effort to do that. And even Mr. Brown, I can say, you know, I didn't know Mr. Brown as well as I do now, and he's right. I mean, you know, he was engaged the whole time. And I know you've been doing good work, but just to see it happen, and Joe, you know, what you were talking about, some of the vision that you were bringing to the table, and so many of us, you know, Brian and the manager, look, Mr. Moody, who's been around this town a long time, he was, a lot of us didn't have a whole lot to say. But I think we've got a lot of ideas, and we're gonna put them to play, and we need everybody at the table to make it a reality. Thank you, guys. So with that, we're finished, and wanna thank you again, Chairman Mitchell and Manager Carter. Are there any other last questions or comments? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next steps.
Yep.
There's a closed session.
No, we have a zoning, we have a zoning, and then we have a closed session after that.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Please take a five-minute break, and we'll reconvene at seven o'clock.
City Attorney.
Mr. Carter, you have a question.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, we're back to you, sir.
All right. Well, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, mayor, council, and Dr. Russell here with us this evening, she's gonna talk about some of the issues that we've encountered as we've tried to move through this zoning language change. Had an opportunity to review, we've got some feedback from several of you. We'll go through those this evening, however. The goal of this is to leave this meeting with a consensus about what you're gonna vote on tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
So it is gonna be imperative that we agree on language that will be presented to you tomorrow, because you won't have an opportunity tomorrow to talk about it, it will just be a vote. So we gotta get that out, and we gotta get to a point where the group is comfortable with what will be presented to you tomorrow to vote on.
Yes, sir.
All right. Dr. Russell.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Dr. Russell.
Good evening. So let me share with you that we're going to just walk you through the proposed amendments to the Portsmouth zoning ordinance as it relates to four use groups, restaurants, private clubs, entertainment venues, event centers, and fraternal social and fraternal clubs. The intent of the proposed provisions to the ordinance is to improve outcomes that result in strengthening public safety and addressing community concerns related to just the number and frequency of event centers and entertainment use permits that you were considering. When we took a look at this, we've been looking at this particular type of use, these particular types of uses since fall of last year. So it's been some time. And since then, we proposed some language that our planning commission has considered, and that council members have had an early look at, and expressed some concerns to staff about the proposed regulations that we've continued to modify and tweak to address those concerns. And so let's start with restaurants. As the proposed language, as it relates to restaurants, you'll recall that we had some, staff had some concerns about regulating restaurants and whether or not we would be overzealous in attempting to regulate these types of uses. But we believe we've reached a reasonable compromise with the regulations, and those regulations would essentially require that restaurants that serve alcohol after 12:00 a.m. would be required to submit a security plan, would also be required to have digital surveillance, and then that we would also restrict outdoor amplified sound after 10:00 p.m., and they would have enhanced lighting at their entrances and around their parking areas. If the same restaurant venues propose to have entertainment, then they would have to be regulated the same way that we are proposing to regulate our entertainment venues, and they would have a use permit. The proposed draft ordinance stipulates what we call supplemental use standards for all entertainment venues and event center venues. And they're too numerous to go through, but they include a security plan, they include an agreement for parking if they're gonna use neighboring commercial parking spaces, capacity limits, and things of that nature. We have some provisions for restaurants that include a revocation trigger, and I believe Mr. Moody has some concerns about that, that that trigger is, if there are two or more verified police responses in a 12-month period for disorderly conduct, fights, or alcohol-related issues, the use permit can be revoked. The restaurant proposed regulations do exempt restaurants that are associated with casino Our entertainment establishments, the proposed regulations for noise, they must not have excessive noise, odor, smoke, any potential off-site impacts. The operations, as a benchmark across the board, the hours of operations will be limited to 8:00 a.m. until midnight. And we've received a lot of comments about that midnight timeframe, it's a little bit too early, is essentially what is being stated. But keep in mind, the Portsmouth zoning ordinance has always included a provision for use permit applicants to modify the supplemental use standards by request. They can make that request while their application is being vetted, for staff to consider and developing the conditions. Those recommendations are then made to the planning commission, and then ultimately the decision is left to the council for whether or not the hours of operation are extended. And so as a placeholder standard across the board for everybody, it would be midnight, but applicants can make a request to extend that, and the considerations for the extension really need to be what the neighboring uses are and the potential adverse impacts for longer hours. Security plans are also required for, or would also be required for entertainment establishments, as well as soundproofing for the entry and exit way. as well as soundproofing for the entry and exit ways. No outside promoters or leasing to third parties for events at these establishments. Rear doors would not be propped open or a means for ingress and egress into and out of the facility. And if their ABC license is revoked for any purpose, then the use permit also become, is also revoked. Again, the revocation trigger locally would be two or more incidences by the local police for violence in a 12-month period. Someone, one of council members asked if it was an error that we had two opportunities for revocation of our permit. One is by city council, and one is by the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator can't revoke a permit this issue by the council. And so if the council issues a use permit, then it would require a subsequent action by the council to revoke that permit. As an interim measure, the operator may be ordered to cease and desist from operations until some time the council can consider a revocation request.
Thank you.
Is that your answer?
Thank you. Yes, that answers it.
He was volunteering, and it was him.
Oh, got it. All right. Thank you, thank you. All right. Event space banquet halls. So in short, the event space banquet halls, with the exception of the ABC regulation piece, follows the draft regulations for the entertainment venues. The reason why we've crafted the language that for the ABC license, as you recall, for the event centers, the C, the left C pools can pull a temporary ABC license, right? And so the difference there is that it doesn't make a lot of sense to tie to the event center operator-owner that if they lose their ABC license, then that use permit becomes an all and void, because more than likely, they don't have an ABC license tied to the owner-owner anyway.
Right.
Okay, we're all on the same page. Initially, when we proposed the draft ordinance language to the planning commission, lots of concerns about civic, social, and fraternal clubs. And how do we address concerns about the private for-profit operators, but not harm the fraternal, civic, and social organizations in the regulations? And so the draft language actually includes a new definition for private clubs that separates out the operator of a civic, social, fraternal club from a private club. Let me also introduce this. We have added in the preamble to the proposed draft ordinance language how these uses that are existing are impacted by the proposed change. We wanted to just make that abundantly clear, that if it is a current legally permitted operator, that the new provisions of the ordinance with respect to the security plan and the lighting and the soundproofing, those requirements won't apply because they are vested, they would be vested non-conforming uses, right? The enforcement provisions of the ordinance that are proposed would apply, right? So the noncompliance for the ABC license issues or two or more police calls in a 12-month period, those could result in a revocation of an existing permit. But relative to improvements to the property and things of that nature, they're vested hours of operation, they're vested, so they would be fine. We've tried to craft the language for civic and social and fraternal clubs, so that if they're primarily not-for-profit and they're membership, primarily membership organizations, there are some restrictions relative to can't join the day of an event, right? There's a waiting period for that. The number of participants in the venue can exceed the number of members at the venue that should address the concerns related to not causing undue hardship to this type of user in our efforts to strengthen the regulation of private clubs and event venue uses. And then the last item that I'd like to discuss is enforcement. So our zoning permits, zoning permits are administratively issued. Those can be revoked by the zoning administrator for noncompliance. Use permits can be revoked by city council only, although a temporary cease and desist order can be issued administratively. Special exceptions can be revoked by city council or board of zoning appeal. Our ABC, if for any reason your ABC license for the entertainment venue, private clubs are revoked, then they automatically must cease and desist from operations. And then there's an appeal period for the administrative revocation. They must do that within 30 days. And if the use is revocated, then that same type, same use application is prohibited for six months. And that's really, you know, to address, like, gaining the system, to legally change it into these business name or something of that nature, and continue your operations essentially seamlessly. But if it's similar in all respects, except for the name, six months. No, no. All right, with that, I have asked Mr. Trabamboon, our zoning administrator, to join me in this presentation this evening, and together, we're going to try to answer your questions and move this forward in a way that we can have some resolution after our public hearing.
Councilman Dotson, sir, you have the floor.
So one of the questions I wrote in was about the two violations, the two violent citations that they have. When we look at the crime statistics, most of those occur outside the business, but developed in the business and then spilled outside. These businesses could just kick everybody outside real quick, and we still have an incident that happens outside it. The way it's written, it seems to me that it's, we're only going to find it if the incident is logged as occurring inside the business. So I would think there would be some sort of legal definition to include those that might have spilled out from the business and happened, like, in front of the door just outside, and the businesses are just pushing them out quick, so they would be in violation of it. I'm concerned about how we word that and enforce it, and if law enforcement might help us with that, or if you've already thought of it.
No, I had thought about it before I saw it.
Because the statistics, when I see them from the police, show a whole bunch of violent events right outside.
Yes.
But not inside.
I think the best way to handle that is to confer with Chief Jenkins upon his, well, coincidence, right?
Yeah, he will be right, but we can still reach out to him.
Okay. Yeah, we, let's discuss that as an issue with Chief Jenkins and share the language with him.
Okay, and the other question that I wrote in was about, some organizations just charge, like, an entry fee, and the booze is all free, so they're not really charging for the booze or need an alcohol license because it's a private club. How is that covered?
Well, when I read it, I'm not sure I understood what the concern is. Is it because they aren't licensed, they would not be licensed by ABC?
Well, no, because we could still have a violence-related event for alcohol serving it, but the way your ordinance is worded, it's only for those that charge for alcohol. Alcohol can still be, they can still walk around your ordinance by not charging for the alcohol, but charging money in other ways to make the revenue. So I think it would be where alcohol's served, not necessarily where it's charged. Some people, in some clubs, you can bring it in yourself and just log it in your locker, or log it in, and it would be a way around your regulation. They wouldn't be regulated by that, and it wouldn't have to fall under. I'm not sure how.
I think that's an issue that we would need to confer with the chief about. The, so private clubs are required to meet the entertainment establishment standards. The police compliance must comply with nurses. It's not, it is not, if they serve alcohol, if they have two or more police incidents in a 12-month period, or if they lose their ABC license, it's not an. So I think it would still.
Some of them don't have any ABC license. For instance, one of the businesses that I ran, similar businesses to me, could apply for a museum license, and that museum has an exemption under the ABC that allows you to just charge an entrance fee and serve alcohol all day long.
I think what she's saying is that it's not an and, it's an or. So ABC or violations involving alcohol by the police. So with the license or without, I think we're covered.
It didn't seem clear to me in the way it was written. It seemed like it was only those that charge for alcohol.
No, no, because remember, do you remember where that was? Do you remember where that came from?
I don't know if I had it.
Cheat sheet, it gets me.
You have a cheat sheet?
Yeah.
You have the comparison?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have that printed out.
Yeah, it was in another comparison sheet, and I don't have it in front of me.
She said it was in that comparison sheet.
It says a few more violations, which I can never remember, police currently in or indirect connection with the establishment for the 12-month period, as only mentioned earlier.
Yeah. So look at page six. Look at that 14.
Yes.
See how that language is included or?
It don't really.
It doesn't tie to the.
Alcohol, yeah, that's what I was trying to find out. I didn't see where it was tied to alcohol.
It's isolated.
It's tied to, tied to an establishment, not necessarily alcohol.
Can you see that?
Page six.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Yeah, that paragraph covers what you're concerned about, I believe.
Well, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that some of them need a use permit for some of the private clubs that I'm talking about.
That's the zoning administrator, so it's not tied to a use permit. Every, it's tied to the zoning administrative requirement. And if I'm wrong, please jump in there. I believe Dr. Dotson said that private clubs would not be tied to a use permit. Is that what you're saying? Right. But, so page two, every district where there's a permit, it's required a use permit.
Page what?
Two, this chart, this table, this table right here.
Again, there's that one exception for a museum that you might want to look into also, that ABC provides a cutout for.
Okay, I think, I'm just having a little trouble, but I think he said museums.
ABC provides a cutout for museums to also serve alcohol for just an entrance fee, too.
And so you want us to?
Look into it to see how it would be applied. There's a beer museum up outside of DC that does that. You can, you pay a $10 admission fee and drink all the beer you want all day long, no charge for the beer, just, it comes in the glass, you buy the glass, you can get a free beer.
I assume Moody did that? Sir, you have a floor?
No, it's not. Okay, under restaurants, on the two verified police responses within 12 months, there again, a lot of times, restaurants' addresses used for disturbance that's in the street right in front of the restaurant. And I know there have been restaurants in Portsmouth, their address has been the reference point when actually the disturbance didn't happen on the restaurant's property. So that's, that's a concern. And also, if a restaurateur has got some unruly patrons, perhaps they don't want to pay for their meal, whatever, didn't like their meal, and they get loud, and the restaurateur might call 311 or 911 and have the police come there, yet they're being penalized for hitting off a potential disturbance. So I just don't see, to me, it looks like they're being treated unfairly in those cases. So I think, I think unless it's, you know, a disturbance of a physical type, a brawl or something like that, I just don't see why we would count two verified police responses that may not be the restaurant's fault.
Can I just jump in here? One thing I want to say about that, I think you make a good point, but you have to remember that each of these require notice and an opportunity to be heard, and so the restaurant would be able to make that point to, on the appellate level, so that there can be some distinction between whether this was just, so those facts can bear out.
What would that appeal look like?
You know, anytime that you're going to be taking action on a business, you have to give them notice, which would be the citation, and then they would have the ability to come in and argue to whomever, whether it be the zoning administrator, or the BZA for the appeal, or the courts, each of those levels. And so those facts would bear out, and hopefully, it wouldn't even get to that if the administrator's looking at it saying, "This was just some loudmouth, it's not drunk people being violent", the kind of, you know, there's some discernment in the person that's evaluating it. The reason that we have to have it so broad, councilman, is that we have to be able to capture, be able to capture those circumstances that don't naturally fit specifically. And so if we just say violence that covers the domestic dispute that constantly happens in this lounge that we're trying to, you know, get away from, and it also allows for us to distinguish between a rowdy customer, it's really hard to write those specifics into legislation like this, because you don't, for everyone you capture, you lose a couple. So that's why that notice and opportunity to be heard is lost on us.
And to me, that outlines the, really, the danger of it, because it's kind of all over the board. And then you've got your zoning administrator being the judge of perhaps revoking the restaurant's use permit. So I just don't see that as.
Not use permit, no one can do that but council, but the zoning ability to occupy the.
Yeah, yeah, the zoning.
The occupancy.
So that's, that's a broad brush, I think.
One of the things I'd like to consider in that language is, you're talking about a situation where the, I guess, the owner of the restaurant or the manager is calling the police, right?
Yeah.
But this talks about a violent incident. Even if the manager's calling, if it's a violent incident, I think it sure really needs to fall into this, because whether it's violent because I started it, or violent because you started it, everybody else in the restaurant is in jeopardy because there's a violent incident going on. And that's what we're trying to curtail, and I'm trying to figure out who did it at this point. We're just trying to make, we just want it to go away. So if, you know, if I'm a great guy most of the time, but I create multiple violent incidents in your restaurant, there's probably someone who needs to.
What if you run up a bar tab, or you've got a large group for dinner, and I skip out on the bill?
Did that become violent?
Yeah, no, but I call the cops.
But that's not violent.
Who's going to determine that?
The cops. Yeah, it'd be documented by the, that's what it says in there.
Two or more violent incidents.
It says violent, you know, if you call the cops because, you know, something's going on and there's no violence, then that's not a violent incident.
Okay.
Now, if you skip out on the tab, and when I tell you about it, all your friends start a brawl, then I still call you, but that's violent still.
Could I ask a related question on this point? Yeah, go ahead.
So.
Wait, wait, let him finish, then you have a floor.
Yeah, the other concern I had was on private clubs, and I don't know that we've defined the difference between a nightclub and a private club.
We have, we have, we've attempted to.
Yeah, I thought there was some language.
Private club and a civic fraternal to separate them. So the private club is the for-profit, and that's into the nightclub?
Well, that could be Elizabeth Manor.
Elizabeth Manor, I believe, would be the civic fraternal social. Is that?
Is that?
What?
It's defined here, Exhibit A.
Well, you, you have to, you have to pay to join.
It's not yet.
And, and they sell alcohol and they're for profit.
So let's look at the definition. Civic, social, fraternal, philanthropic, structured, and related facilities owned and operated by a corporation, association, or group of individuals established for fraternal, social, educational, recreational, or cultural enrichment of its members and primarily not-for-profit, meaning members need certain required qualifications for membership and pay dues. And then that user, and which is not a private club. Right. That's important additional language. And then the definition of private club is refers to the ABCs.
It says primarily, it doesn't, it doesn't exclude it from being a for-profit entity. And by the way, you're a member of a country club, you pay to be there, it's not open to the general public in that sense because they do have a board and they choose who joins those organizations.
And how about, how about the Portsmouth Service League's Women's Club? And Deport's Club that's been there for years on High Street, that's a private, that's a private club.
It is.
I think they're, they're code-defined to try to make the distinction. What you all described, they added the language "and" which is not a private club. So that would exclude the places that you all are concerned about. The private club is then defined underneath, and I'm looking at Exhibit A, page one, is that what you all have? Yeah. And so unless it fits under private club, you'd have to do some flipping between.
Private club is on page three.
It's also on page five, right? No, these are the use standards, that's different. The definition, let me, let me be clear. The definition is on page one, Exhibit A. What you were describing by the.
The use, right.
So you just have to make sure it doesn't fit within that definition, which it should not.
Wouldn't the Portsmouth Service League be considered a nonprofit organization?
Right.
So that would be taken as a private club, right?
Right.
That, that, that's why I think this should be a separation there between a private club and a nightclub.
So this, here, these two are the distinctions, so we think all of those.
Would a nightclub fall into entertainment though? I mean, no, I guess.
I think to his point is because when private club is defined, it's a for-profit.
Oh, okay, okay, I got you.
So you have to read the two together and that should distinguish.
Private club is defined as not-for-profit.
No, well, according to the.
I'm sorry, social.
Well.
It's important that one person gives the definition, so if we could just have whoever's going to be the person who is the expert give the definition so we're not confusing our guess.
That's correct.
Yes.
Hold, hold on, because Mark has a question. So, 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 exactly, let's, you know, because we can give a whole lot of hypotheticals. And at the end of the day, I gotta say this, this can't be us dealing with every hypothetical because we're just not going to be able to do that. We've got to use our professionals and our legal team who instruct us to move forward. Council does reserve the right to make the changes and amendments. The, the zoning is owned by council, so if we don't get it 100% right tonight, we still got to move forward with something if that's the, if that's the pleasure of council. So go ahead with your question because I know you had something and then we're going to take it back to Dr. Russell.
Okay, thank you. So back to the question that council, that the vice mayor was asking about the two incidents. So on page four, Roman numeral three, it says restaurants that exceed two verified police responses. On page six, Roman numeral fourteen, which has to do with entertainment places, two or more violent incidents. So the language is a little bit different. One is two police responses, the other's two violent incidents. Shouldn't, shouldn't, the first one is on page four, Roman numeral three. Restaurants that exceed two verified police responses, so there's nothing in there about violence.
Page four, Roman numeral three. But wait, again, remember those are, we got to look at this, you don't just take it isolated. These are use-specific standards. These apply across the board, whether you're zoning or use permit. So these are, these are the standards that we already use, most of this is already in there. So these are not going to be specific to, these are, these are things that you all can include in your, in your conditions when you're looking at things. Am I right, Dr. Russell? Okay, so, so that's why there's a, there's a difference because you maybe throw that in there, maybe, maybe you put something else in there. So this is a laundry list you pull from. The first pages are.
I, I don't, I don't get that.
Yeah, I don't understand.
I would, I would think the language would be the same. Why, why wouldn't you use the violent incident?
Because we have to first isolate the type of business we're talking about. So we know the type of use or permit, or if it's a zoning issue, or if it's by right. Because then it triggers when a violation comes, who gets to do what. And so that's why there's a difference. So we can't, and so what, what the team tried to do is really isolate it to the actual entity being regulated under a certain given circumstance.
We're talking about restaurants.
Okay, so restaurants are by right. We're not talking about entertainment, we're not talking about club, private club, we're talking about by right.
That's right.
Roger Brown's just giving out food and drink. So if you, and so that, that standard applies to that entity, not the others, unless you, unless council so chooses to add.
So I understand what you said, I'm not sure you understand what I, the question I'm asking.
Okay.
In the case of restaurants, the threshold is two police responses. That's on page four, Roman numeral three.
Exceeds two.
Okay, police responses.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's, that's, that's the threshold, police response.
Related to.
Yeah, that matters.
That matters. Related to disorderly conduct, fights, or alcohol-related offenses at or in direct contact to establish within 12 months, within 12 months' period, subject to zoning permit revocation pursuant to that other provision.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm tracking with you.
Okay.
So then go to page six, Roman numeral fourteen, which is not for restaurants, it's for entertainment stuff. And the language there.
Okay, just following from the top line, okay, let me just make sure we're all on the same. We're now changed to recreation and entertainment.
Yep.
So we got the laundry list, we're going to six, yes, six, Roman numeral fourteen.
Yes, yes ma'am.
Two or more.
And there it says two or more violent incidents.
Documented by the police.
Which is different than a police response for fighting, blah de de blah de blah. I'm not, so, so I'm trying to understand why we say violent incidents for entertainment and we say police response involving fighting, et cetera, et cetera, for restaurants. Seems like the threshold.
Well, because one, you all wanted the language from Norfolk. Norfolk's language is what you read the first time, which is the restaurants.
Okay.
Okay, we didn't have that before, we stole that from.
Right.
The second part is what we already had, pretty much we were using anyway in our own ordinance, am I right, Dr. Russell? Okay, and so that's why you have the difference, because we're shoehorning something that we wanted and we're fitting in what we already have.
Okay, so now, so now we acknowledge that we have different language for different categories. Should they be different just because of the way we kind of got here?
Yes.
Or should they be the same?
No, they should not be the same. They're different, they're different entities, they're different types of businesses, likely to have different types of circumstances. And if we're trying to get to the root of violence for what we know, we know that in a restaurant it's likely just going to be that, which that covered. And in this case, in entertainment, we wanted to be consistent with all the language. I know we just pulled that little bit, but there's a lot more language in there, we want it consistent with that. So I think that's why we keep it. And if it turns out that somehow that's confusing as, as we apply it, then we can always come back and change it.
I think, I think it is confusing.
Noted. Absolutely, we know that.
Yeah, I, I, I see a lot of heads going up and down that, that, that that's confusing. Why, why can't we have consistent language?
Well, well, I, I agree. I, I think, I agree with the fact that I think the language is appropriate. Because if you look at it historically, when we have had shootings and fights historically, they've mostly occurred in nightclubs, not restaurants. And so what, what we're trying to get to, as I said, it's not necessarily an ideal, but when one would think of a restaurant, I know that there is usually an environment where people are coming to eat, to dine, perhaps there could be a violent situation. But if you look at the statistics, perhaps more importantly, the violence generally occurs after hours in a nightclub environment where people had too much to drink and they get into some type of melee. That's what I've seen and that's what I've witnessed. I don't think there's a contradiction. I think clearly, I, I, I think it makes sense. I mean, at the end of the day, a restaurant is not the same environment as a nightclub, period. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just for more clarity, I get what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
But for example, a bar, just a regular bar on High Street, not to name any in particular, but if they are just, they're operating as a restaurant until 2:00 AM, serving liquor until 2:00 AM, they're technically just a restaurant. But we've seen instances along the High Street corridor where violent situations have occurred at such establishments that are not, they're not a club, but they're just a eater, eating location that allows a bar to be open until 2:00. And so I think that's where the confusion part comes in. And I think one of them we've recently talked about not too long ago.
Well, the, the real difference are really just the numbers. Restaurant says exceeds two, so that's three or more, and so you get a little more leeway with the restaurants. What we've always said from the very beginning is we want to nip violence in the bud in these entertainment places. So two or more, that's all you get. So at two, we can come in and start snooping around and taking some stuff from you. So I think really the question is, do you want to make it less? I mean, because then it's just one or more. Or do you want to make it more, like we do the restaurants, and make it three or more? That's really the only distinction here between the two.
Just to follow on that point, because I've been listening to the conversation between the distinction and, between the wording here, I think. Is it, is it because of the word response versus incident or just the number of?
So I'm just trying to understand why.
We have a difference in verbiage.
Of language in the two places.
And, and I think Councilwoman Thomas hit on something. It's the difference between an incident.
And a response.
And a response.
Yes. You don't think so?
No, I absolutely do. I, I just, what I'm cautioned on is that this was worked on by this team together in a work group, looking at the entirety where you all are just pulling sentences that sound, look like they should sound alike. And we want, and we probably, and it could be that you're 100% right, but what I would hate for us to do is disregard the group thought that made these distinctions, which aren't that vastly different until we've had them applied in the ways that, trust me, if you can, if I could put Jeff in front of, he would say the same, I argued with him just this morning, the very point. And what was, what was made clear to me was that the group thought for entertainment was very different in this laundry list so that they could cover everything, because this is not just that section alone, there's a laundry list, which is very different from restaurants, which we were trying to make have a, a higher level before we got to mess around with them, than entertainment.
And is it fair to say, you know, look, if it's a violent act at a restaurant, I think based on the police report and the severity of the accident or, or the incident, that will take things to a different level.
There are other options that are readily available.
Right, right, so I, I think if we getting, we getting hung up on the word of violence versus incident, if we've got language that, we need to let, this is a process, I believe, and, and we haven't been down this process. And I get the fact that we want to get every word and sentence right, but we've got professionals here and we asked them to go and do a job. We asked them to bring forth something that we could put in place that will allow for us to have better enforcement and accountability. And at the end of the day, that is what we're seeking. In the short term, is it all going to be absolutely what we want? Perhaps not. But we can't keep having this kind of dialogue in terms of holding up the process. And I, I appreciate the dialogue, but the reality is, we are where we are. We asked our team to put together some really good, sound enforcement parts of this disordinance. And I think, to the most part, I've read it and I've read it over and I've asked questions of Dr. Russell and our legal team. I feel comfortable with it. Is it a great work of art that I think that doesn't need any adjustments? I, I don't, I don't. But at the end of the day, guys, we, we, we're going to have to come to some type of agreement. Because I can assure you, if we don't move forward now, the next time it's going to be something else. So that's just a point again, in consideration.
I'm sorry, can I just add one thing just so that the distinction is clear? In the restaurants, again, remember, this is, they're probably by right and the zoning administrator is going to be doing the enforcement and they have more, they have to have more incidences before the zoning administrator can do that. And then all the appellate processes come into play. But here, on the two or more violent on page six, which applies to the entertainment, remember, this goes directly to you guys.
Yep.
This is, so you're going to see this, you're going to have this come before you and you can say, what? We're absolutely not doing this, or yes, this is exactly what we wanted to see. So that, the rest of that paragraph talks about how you all get to step in and look at that. So let's not forget the full picture there. All right, I'm done, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. So that said, forward with this and then we sort of monitor it, like we've discussed, what does that look like? Does that mean we're a year out, we're six months out, is it longer than that? And then do we circle back and have a conversation amongst us or do we wait and say, like, there's clear loopholes here, we need to act quickly? What, what might that look like?
Well, you, you want a, you know, some, some time to identify problems and to see if it's a, you know, a one-up, you know, or if it's a pattern. I believe that we're also considering making some proposals in our legislative agenda that would help the city enforcement with the regulation of these types of users, so we want to at least wait to pass that point. So I think we're talking about at least six to 12 months, unless there are just some significant problems.
Okay.
And it could be sooner. So there's nothing that prevents council from directing staff to reconsider the proposed language, as we did this time.
Councilman Tillis, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have two, maybe three issues. First one being the 12 o'clock for entertainment venues. I think that, that after coming back from Greenville, and if we want to become that type of location, I think a 12, a 12:00 AM cutoff is going to be destro, excuse me, terrible for the future of Portsmouth. We have a lot of businesses that have invested in Portsmouth and we're going to see a huge, in my opinion, you're going to see a large, you're going to see a negative impact when it comes to people wanting to invest in Portsmouth and also the people that we're looking to bring into Portsmouth. Let's be real, as a entertainment location, people go, most time they're not going out until 10:00 PM. They're hanging out until 1:30, which cutoff for liquor is at 1:30, closing at 2:00. And so I think we really need to be very mindful of those businesses. I do not support us ending entertainment at 12. I understand what you're saying that, you know, council can do conditions here, but ultimately, we could have done that all along. 80% of this ordinance is not new. Most of the stuff has been on the books for years, which leads, to my next point, is the lack of enforcement. We've gotten this far not because we didn't have things on the book, but because there's no enforcement and businesses know Portsmouth has been lackadaisical when it comes to enforcement. And so my question on that point is, how do we, what does our enforcement look like from this day forward? Because let's be real, nobody's going to be out surfing the streets at 10:00 PM until 3:00 AM. So how are we going to do that? Are we going to have a team that's out during that time? And how are we going to enforce this? Because if not, and, and I think because at 12:00, you're just going to, you're going to add to even more illegal activity. Because people are having their business, they know that their crowds coming between that 10 and 12 o'clock time period. Well, I'm going to bring in my. Well, I'm going to bring in my DJ anyway. So we're kind of, you're going to get, it's going to be consequences than what we're looking for. So how can we better work with the nightlife, entertainment, to get a better feel? And, which leads to my third point, is how do we, I really wish we had our nightlife incorporated throughout this process. Like when we do our community engagement for economic development projects or with anything, I feel like the nightlife in the restaurants should have been at the table to help us with this working group, on how do we implement and what's best for business, but also what's best for public safety. Because I really do think that 12:00 AM cutoff period is going to be very, it's going to have negative consequences for businesses enforcement.
So let me ask, answer the question about hours of operation, and I'd like to pitch to you Mr. Carter for enforcement. There, there are instances in, in my tenure, there's, there's the one, Hodges Ferry, where 12:00 does make sense because of the proximity to the residential users. And I think if, in instances where they are not, you know, immediately next door to a residential use, 2:00 might be appropriate, 1:30, 2:00. You know, it's, but what the use permit does is permits a specific evaluation of the appropriateness of the use. And they all require a use permit. They all require a use permit if it's a new user. And so it's as simple as asking for it. That's not a heavy lift. So when we talked about the non-conforming, those that are already exist, they're non-conforming, they can continue to operate, it's just the enforcement provision. So if they were permitted to 2:00 before, they're still permitted to 2:00. So, you know, I just, I want some feedback from you about asking and that being vetted by the planning commission and the council, is that, do you still believe that's a minimal to the nightlife in Portsmouth?
So when you're reading the language, for example, it just says 12:00 AM. So unless the city tells me, oh, I can ask, I'm not going to know. And so let's be real, I'm not, I mean, none of us is going to be here forever, but that's the next zoning director is not an advocate of 2:00 AM. They're going to direct staff to not, not to let applicants know that. And so I think if we're going to, if there's going to be a 12:00 AM cutoff period, but they can, there's a request, maybe we can incorporate that in the language. Because I understand in certain districts, you may not want a 2:00 AM location, but for example, in a downtown area or in a very commercialized area, 2:00 AM is appropriate. And so once again, that, that goes back down to an individual's interpretation to decide whether or not that's going to happen or not. And I think it's going to lead to a, it could possibly lead to a situation where it looks as if the city or council is kind of picking and choosing who gets 2:00 AM and who doesn't get 2:00 AM.
There's a question in the ordinance, in that section, supplemental use standards or modifications, we could recite that. There in those.
And those are okay, so as long as it's related to the impact of the use, which is why the distinction between neighborhood and not neighborhood is important. The other thing is that all of these provisions are ones where counsel had to why it ultimately rests with counsel. You have the purview to amend it as you see fit. So if you think 2:00 AM is good for this entity, then you all can vote for that to be, or if you think they don't need security cameras, you have the ultimate say.
So then, my thing is, if we had the ultimate say, then in the ordinance, why are we putting in black and white 12:00?
So that you have a range.
I know, but then it's like we're going against our own ordinance.
No, you're not. Everybody, everybody knows, if you're in this business, you know that these are use standards, and that the standards have the ability to be amended by the person giving that authority.
Absolutely.
Across the board, no matter where you are in Virginia, that's how it's, that's how it is.
Absolutely. But once again, I'm just, I'm just confused with, so like, for example, if we had, 80% of this was already in writing, it just wasn't being enforced. But you can always add conditions. Conditions were never a part of ordinances, but we knew that we could have used, we could have used conditions. Now we're trying to pick and choose and which, which conditions are now going to be in an ordinance, but then we're saying later on that, well, it's up to you to decide if you want that in the ordinance or not, I mean, in the conditional use permit. Why don't we just keep the ordinance basically like it is and just add and take away conditions as we go?
One of the reasons we're sitting at the table, having this conversation, is because this body decided that there's a group of establishment, a category assessment, I say it that way, that you wanted to have more control over. So we wrote the language to give you more control.
Correct.
We can't give you more control than not give you more control. So if there's an issue like, like the time, all right, what I would prefer you to do is, because at the end of the day, I need language that you're going to agree on. So if, if time is a problem, will you guys change the model? Do you want to modify the time? Or do you want to keep the time the way it is? That's the real question I need answered.
Well, and I know, I want my colleagues to say something, but I, I need to add this because this may be important. So myself and Councilman Hugo, we were called to a meeting last Friday, and when we got there, there were five club owners, nightclub owners in the meeting that we got surprised on. But one of the questions that was the overriding question of all these nightclub owners was, hey, Mayor, you're going to put us out of business. You know, we, we, we can't comply with all of this. And here's what we told them. We're not here to put you out of business, just like Dr. Russell just said. Right now, it's all non-conforming. If you're in there today and you're operating the way you're operating, you're good to go. But here's the reality, if you break the rules, if you violate any of these rules this day forward, you're held to this standard. Now, to your point, and they were all in agreement with that, just so you know. All the clubs were in agreement with that. All the club owners that are on, on George Washington and on Victory, they were all in agreement with that. When we met, were they in agreement with that, sir?
They were.
So, so the point I'm trying to say is, I think we're confusing this. We asked for this in the sense that we want to hold folks accountable that we know that have created different kind of situations. The reality is, to the point, we ultimately control it. If, to Dr. Russell's point, when that person comes for that use permit, and they have a meeting or they come and meet, which I encourage all of them to meet with planning, they can outline all of the parameters. Is that fair or not fair? And that business owner has every right to ask the question. And for you to suggest, or for any of us to suggest that we should lay out everything for them, I don't agree with that. If you're a business, you should know how you want to operate, and you should be able to ask the question, and we should be able to tell you whether it's permissible or not. If the business owner asks the question, can I stay open at 2:00? Well, sure you can, but here's what you got to have in place, and you got to take that before counsel so that it's approved. That's the reality to me. It gives us the autonomy and the accountability to say, do we want this here or do we not want it here? It's not picking and choosing. At the end of the day, everybody from this point when we adopt this, they're green, they got green lights. What it is, is enforcement, folks. And we talked about enforcement, but now we almost don't want enforcement. And I'm confused because I thought that's what we wanted. I thought we wanted to create, and here's what I said to that group of, of club owners, and the councilman will tell you. I listened to their concerns, I say, guys, here's the non-negotiable. Safety is a non-negotiable. If you operate under the guise of safety, and here's what they had to say to me, well, we know who the shooters are, we know who the bad, bad actors are, we banned some of the people from our industry. I said, wonderful. Well, you should be self-policing your industry, because if you want your industry to be viable in the city of Portsmouth, guess who needs to hold everybody accountable? You do too. So that was the conversation. So just so you all know, we've all thought about this, but what I conveyed to that group was simply what Dr. Russell and our legal team put together, is accountability going forward? Is it going to be perfect? No. But we, yes, we do get to pick and choose, and that's the right of counsel. And, and it doesn't have to agree with everybody.
So my biggest concern though is just that we're putting something in black and white that we're going, that we're agreeing on tonight, that tomorrow, we're going to say we don't. If we're going to allow a business to operate past midnight, all I'm saying is, where it says the hours of operation of entertainment should be from 8:00 AM until midnight, and then comma, unless approved, like for some type of, some type of extension. Because reading this, we're, we're just totally going against what we're agreeing should be.
You just want a later time at midnight.
Or a request, or put a comma unless oriented by counsel.
That's every one of these. But, but part of it is like understanding how this works. And you shouldn't have a business that don't know that these are all use standards. So standards are all flexible in terms of the council can change. That would be added on all of these. That's what, that's the point that we're trying to make, is that it's not just the hours, it's, council can negate or add to any of these. You all have the power to do that. Only you, as a body. So, but if it is that you want it later because it looks ridiculous to have an entertainment until midnight, then that's, then that's the discussion we should be adding.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, yeah.
Well, I think it's ridiculous.
So then, yeah, so that's the picture, okay.
Get your full degree.
Then we talk about what time should be. Know that, once you put it in writing, that is the, that's the norm across the board that everyone's going to expect. And so then you're going to have to get four people to, to take it back. Plus the, plus planning, your staff, plus the planning commission, who's also going to be looking at it before it gets to you. And so remembering that, we had shootings, we have cases, I'm involved in it, my team's involved in it, we've got staff, and we've got four different enforcement groups out here doing what y'all asked us to do. And if you just put this in there, I lose, I lose, I lose leverage. They lose leverage. We lose leverage.
And in all fairness, and I'll end with this, in all fairness, I don't think shootings are related solely to entertainment districts or entertainment facilities. So for this whole conversation to be because shootings are happening, we have shootings in broad daylight. But the extra two hours, I don't think is going to cause a, a huge difference, especially if things are being enforced, which is where the cities, the city comes in to do. But at the same time, we're, we're a city of small business, we just did a whole meeting about embracing small business and growing business. And yes, you can embrace business and grow business and still have the public safety feature without causing damage to small businesses. And I just think that this is going to hurt businesses unless we, we just have to stay true to what we're going to vote on. And the fact that this is in black and white, I just don't like saying something today and then next week, oh, I just think we should change it. I don't like that.
I have a different question, so I want to, I didn't want to leave the topic of hours yet unless we're good to move forward.
Well, we don't have a decision.
Okay, that's why, and that's why I, I heard you, Mr. Carter, about, I was about to say Mr. Sidney.
Let's finish the conversation so we can determine what the next steps are.
Right.
Time.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
Oh, okay, so I can move to the, no, okay.
With your own hours.
All right, so hours, I asked this actually in my email, and Dr. Russell, you know, your, what you just laid out here, I also, just seeing the, the time laid out like that, kind of was jarring, like 8 to 12, I'm like, for, under entertainment, was a bit jarring to see it that way. However, your explanation regarding they can, through the use permit process, request extra time, made sense. And I understand your reasoning regarding there's different situations, if it's an entertainment close to residential, that might require a different, you know, time based on if it's, you know, a club or entertainment venue that's not near residential and not, won't be impacting, you know, citizens trying to go to sleep or whatever. So I understood why, how applicants can request that later time. It was just a bit jarring not knowing the, how would an applicant get past this 12:00 if they're reading this? Do they know they have the option to go beyond midnight? So for me, that was a bit, that was my only, why I asked that question in the, in the email, follow-up, when, when kind of reviewing this. So I under, I, I get why we, why we're doing it and why you need the parameters. I just didn't know that they could, you know, go that route. But it makes sense with our current process. So the only recommendation I could have to add to this is, I mean, I guess since it's all based on use permits, I'm fine with it unless we just don't mention hours at all. But I think the reason we mentioned, and you're saying the reason we mentioned hours is because we needed some restriction and some, some, some boundaries around it.
Every use permit that we have had, that we passed, we were livid that the hours were what, I wish I could roll back the tape. Every use permit, it was about the hours, was one of the main gripes.
Yeah.
So that's why this is here.
Okay, yep. And so I'm fine with that. Can I go to the next question I had?
Well, yeah, go ahead, and then Council, Vice Mayor Moody.
Okay. And then my next question is also related to what I sent in the follow-up, and I see it here in the presentation as well, highlighted under entertainment establishments. The restrictions, no outside promoters or third-party events for entertainment establishments. But if a restaurant then also gets the use permit for entertainment establishment because they want to have a DJ or something like that. So we're, I don't, oh, okay.
Is that the one we can't bring anybody in?
Yes.
For third party. So that means no shows, no?
But we have restaurants right now where we have events, they, we, the restaurants, well-known restaurants can rent space for third-party events, reunions, homecomings, you get where I'm going here?
Right.
So if they, if a restaurant now has this entertainment, this use permit attached to them, does that restrict them from?
Yep.
I, I, I personally think that might be an issue, because we have, so the restaurants that currently do that, are they not having, they don't fall under this?
No, they don't. Right, as long as they're vested. Am I right?
Actually, it sounds like y'all know what we're talking about. I'm actually here to finish it, because I'm thinking it might, if they're already doing it?
Yeah.
Then aren't they vested under the non-conforming?
Yes.
Stat, okay.
That's my thought. Yeah, okay. That's, that, yes, that's my thought. Now, the length, the, the one thing that Dr. Russell was alluding to with the statute where we can limit the timing of use permits, which is what we're looking at down the line, that opens everybody back up to it once that timeframe kicks in. So if we get added to that statute, we can then start limiting use permits, so everybody gets, everybody gets a little taste of the new stuff once we do it that way, which gives us a little more teeth.
So I'm going to use a, a very loose example here, that's not so relative. But let's say I'm hosting a family reunion, and I want to host a, you know, night banquet or something at a restaurant. They, I want to bring in a DJ, I want to bring in people, they have space in a backroom or something that I can use. The restaurant is no longer allowed to, if they also have the entertainment use permit attached to them, they're no longer allowed to entertain that type of event? Is that?
Are they already doing it? Do they have?
No, if they're a new restaurant, and they, you know, restaurants have extra space and people that are throwing events, the restaurant has the use permit for the restaurant, but they also have the additional use permit for the entertainment because they have DJ for brunch, or, you know, you know, they have other things going on that qualify under entertainment. So now, does that put that restriction for no outside promoters or third-party events?
Well, it's a little bit more than that. You just talked about X on 5, Dr. Russell on page 5, paragraph X.
Yes, that's it, neither.
Okay, so it says for profit. That's really the distinction. So neither the establishment nor any portion of it shall be leased, let, or used by any third party for an entertainment event for profit. That's what's missing from the, from the little sheet.
This one, yes.
Yeah, so for, so unless your, unless your family reunion is charging tickets, then they're good. Or you got some outside promoter coming to host it, then you're good.
Let's say I have a class reunion that charges to get, I'm just saying.
The question though is, did you charge for the, the reunion, or did you charge for that event? Because most people pay for those reunions, they pay to kind of, hey, you know, for the reunion.
We talked about a very particular thing that happens, a very particular place.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
By a very particular group, and they're vested, so that's probably going to be fine. But moving forward.
A new place would not be able to.
Because I think the issue that we're limiting the number of places that these things are occurring.
Are able to do that.
Yes. And you got to draw the line somewhere.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
I think this can be summed up in two words, be careful what you ask for.
Be careful, yes, I got you. Be careful. Buyer beware.
I still, I still think a greater distinction should be made between nightclubs and private clubs, i.e. Elizabeth Manor, Women's Club, that sort of thing. And my question on, on the nightclub, and I think initially, that's what got us into this, was what was happening after 2:00.
And I agree with Councilman Tillis.
And I agree with Councilman Tillage, I think, you know, cutting everybody off at 12:00 would be too restrictive. But my question is, on a nightclub, what are the hours, how late can a nightclub operate?
However, as late as you want it to be.
See, that, there lies the problem. Norfolk, and I mentioned Norfolk, because we somewhat looked at what they were doing.
It's their language, and I'm being facetious when I say that.
Well, so you'll know, on nightclubs, they can operate between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. So.
Their city, their council, just like you, can give an exception to that, to allow for that, but.
That may be, but I'm just telling you what's in writing, what's in ink, and to Councilman Tillage's point, whatever we want, if it's not in ink, and I know use permits, we always have flexibility, but.
So then, so then we could take that language, if that's what you all want, but you've got to live with it.
Well, that, that was some of the problem, as to what was happening later than 2:00 a.m., wee hours in the morning, so.
Most of those places aren't open past 2:00, there's only one.
It just takes one.
There's multiple, actually. But I do think, you know, cutting the time off at 12, instead of things happening at 3:00, those things are going to be happening at 12:00.
Yes.
And so, because people, they're not going to go home. And so why not have them in a place that is a business that we can ensure, we can help to work with public safety on, instead of having them in the streets, or having them in an environment that we know no good is happening at 3:00 a.m.? That just doesn't.
And that's why it should have been a distinction between nightclubs and restaurants and private clubs, like a women's club, like Elizabeth Manor, like a De Porres.
I stand by the principle that we have done that, I just think it's very legally language, and it's not, because we have, we're trying to, we're trying to cover the universe of, but I assure you that they would not fall within the restrictions outlined the way we've written it, unless we come up with some new combination of something that we just didn't consider. But it's, it's in the preamble, in paragraph 3 and 4 on the front page, and it's also in the definition under Exhibit A on Page 1. And we tried to really go to the core of what the organization was, and not so much the name, or where it's located, or what it, it's really the core of what those organizations serve. And if it's any of those fraternal, social, educational, recreational, cultural enrichment, you know, those soft things, then they're not a private club, and they're not an entertainment. And it covers it.
No, I think you're right. And if we could just, did you want the floor, sir? Go ahead.
Just for a second, thank you. I believe Mr. Tillage's point might be, and I agree with Mr. Tillage very much, can be solved by saying, reference in this line, because it's one line, if I was a businessman just reading this, I would run right away. I wouldn't even ask the question. But I would say, we need to see some reference in that line to say, something like, it might be extended at council's approval to 2:00 a.m. Just a supplementary line that directs them to say, if I'm coming from out of town and I'm reading it.
Yep, you guys are going to have to give me a time, because if I put it in this statutory, the way statutory interpretation is, if I put it in this, and I don't put it in others, that means that it doesn't exist in others, and that's not true. So, so we have, if you want to extend the time, just extend it. Give me another number to put in there.
Yeah, no, but I agree with you, when you're saying that we still need that midnight restriction for, for certain neighborhoods, we need to have it. But we also need to know.
You still restrict.
But here's.
But coming in as a new council member, and if I read this as a new council member, and didn't have the council that you just gave me, I would, I would look at this and go, oh, okay, sorry, I'm not coming here to Portsmouth.
Well, I don't agree with that totally. I, and I say that because that's one point of view. Here's the reality, all of the establishments that are in place today, it doesn't impact them, it does not impact them. Going forward, as it is written, they have, they, the business owner that you say looked at that, well, if I'm a business owner, if I'm a proven business owner, I'm going to ask some questions. I'm not going to look at something and then run for the hills. So, and I've been in business long enough to know, and I've talked to a lot of people, the reality is, we're creating the environment where people have to be accountable. That is what we said, that is what we're doing. Everybody that's opened their doors now that are in business are not subject to this. Only to the degree that they cause or problems arise at their institutions, or their, or their business, then they come under these new rules. It's enforceable. And, and I, I got to go back to what I said when we met with this group of club owners. We said these same things, I said these same things. We had them all sitting around the table, and I said, guys, is there anything you object to? No, we don't, we just don't want you to shut our business down. Well, if you follow the rules that are written in place to protect us, to provide the public safety that we said was important to us, then you ain't got a problem. And guess what? Now, y'all might have had some different conversations, but everybody that was at that table agreed. And I told them, this is not, this is not intended to be punitive to anybody who's currently in business operating, or anybody who seeks to come in business operating. This is, this is intended to be enforceable rules that we have established as a council, with the guise, and understanding that the number one priority, which is our non-negotiable, is public safety. I stand by that, I think our team has done an amazing job. Is it 100% perfect? Does every word show up? No, it's not. But guys, you know, we got people waiting. So, if y'all, if y'all want to keep on moving it back, if that's the pleasure of council to keep it going, we can keep it going.
Or we could just approve the ones that are waiting.
I want to reiterate what you say, Mayor, and say that I think what we have here is what we asked for, to the degree that it can be. Of course, there's opportunities maybe to revise it as we go on, but we put this forward with the goal of improving public safety. That was our number one goal coming out of our council retreat. We've made incredible gains in that field, and this supports that. There are opportunities for us as a council to make adjustments based on businesses as we go, and there are opportunities down the road to change any part of this, if we feel necessary, as we get a handle on public safety, if that is an outcome of this. So I would encourage us tonight to move forward with this as it is, with all of that understanding that our goal is public safety, we are looking at redevelopment, large parts of our city, and creating lots of new opportunities here, and this is something we can revisit, this is something we need right now.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor Moody.
My question, has anything changed with the use itself? It still goes with the, with the property?
Yes. There was a little bit of change, where we changed the lessy, lessor relationship, we did make that a little bit tighter, so that the lessor couldn't just hold their hands up and go, that guy did it, not me. So we did make that a little tighter.
Right. We also discussed a review process on use permits.
So that's that language that we're talking about in our legislative packet, where it will end at a certain time, and we can go back, and people will be.
Say in a period of two years.
That's exactly right.
We could have an automatic review.
Or termination, so that.
Or termination, yeah, whatever. So that'll be in our legislative package.
Our Sergeant Dan comes up.
And I think that'll be a good tool as well.
That'll give us.
So I think, have we, have we gone round robin on this one enough, that we can, so tomorrow, we're going to be taking a vote, and we need to determine, is this good enough for us to go forward, or are we going to push it back and have another revision? I'm opening the floor now for us to have a call for consensus, someone from the floor, call for consensus for us to move forward. Councilman Hugo is calling for consensus, can we have that consensus to move forward? I guess, what is it, finalized or approved in the consensus? By a show of hands.
Are we changing anything?
No, not changing anything, but.
This is as is, right?
As is. We're going to move forward as is, and we're going to prove, prove what's on the table, and we're going to, going to continue to, you know, hear out those objections, and deal with them one by one. Is that fair? Thank you, guys, and this has been a very good discussion, and I'll just close out by saying, the zoning rests with council. Is that fair, Madam Attorney?
That's right, zoning rests with council, always.
Zoning rests with council. So, so, so we have the ability to do what is in the city's and the citizens' best interest at any time we feel that that's in jeopardy.
Mayor, one question.
Okay, so, my question is about moving forward, and tomorrow, we had some applicants that we delayed, right?
Yeah.
And I still want to make sure I'm clear on, does, they apply before this package, so does this apply?
It does.
They're good.
Well, no, I think they're, and applies to them.
They're good to the degree, go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm not going to answer.
Yeah, it, it will apply to them. They've not vested yet. So because they've not vested yet, they get the full, but again, council has to say, so you don't want something that's in there, vote to take it out.
So, and that's my, okay, so my follow-up question regarding the hours, if their initial package did not include a request for a time beyond 12, is that something that we grant them without them asking? Or is that, okay?
Two of them, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, you have the floor, I'm sorry.
Two asked, Abby and Brown asked, and the draft of resolutions reflect their request.
Okay.
Hogan conceded it's hottest very midnight, because of the proximity to residential areas and the concerns raised by neighbors.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
But again, you all have a final say.
100%, that's what I was going.
If they want to stay till 2:00 a.m. and disturb all the neighbors up there.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, great, great, great discussion. Now we are in need of a closed session, so if I could have the Vice Mayor, please read the closed session motion. We'll go ahead and.
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of discussing the performance of the city assessor and the process for retaining a new city attorney.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the row?
Yes, sir, Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Dr. Dotson.
Yes.
Mr. Hugo.
Hi.
Mr. Moody.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Tillage.
Yes.
Mayor Glover.
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, we're in closed, we've got a, we'll have a five-minute for transition.
I hereby move that each council member certify that to best of his or her knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such business, public business matters that were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered, and the closed meeting just concluded.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Yes, sir, Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mr. Dotson.
Yes.
Mr. Hugo.
Hi.